We're good.
Now, yeah, one second. Ms. Matthias, we are live and streaming. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for December 11th, 2023. Please be reminded that no public testimony is permitted during the review session. You will wait till the public hearing session. Just for the record, Vice Chair Shabeta is joining us remotely. The first items up are adjournments. 1193 BZ, 4645 Cassina Boulevard, Queens. 2021, 14BZ, 2010 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island. The following are postponements. 2022, 66BZ, 405 Arthur Kill Road, Staten Island. Differrals. 2019, 264BZ, 3568 Nostrand Avenue, Brooklyn. 2020, 51BZ, 2020, 52A, 2020, 53BZ, and 2020, 54A, 95 and 105 Ridgeway Avenue, Staten Island. 2021, 41BZ, 2838 Cummings Street, Manhattan, and 106, 76BZ, 129, volume 4, 12901 North Conduit Avenue, Queens. The following are to schedule for decision. Item number 8, 29557BZ, 14615 Union Turnpike, Queens.
Hey, we received the community vote recommending approval of this application. So I then make a motion to approve this extension of term with the following condition. That in addition to the prior board conditions, the operator and/or the owner shall monitor the graffiti and remove it within 48 hours. And the trench drain has to be constructed prior to obtaining the certificate of occupancy. And that shall be obtained within 18 months of the issuance of this extension. Motion to grant?
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you. I just want to note that we received a revised statement of facts in response to the board's request. And I vote aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
This application has been granted. Item number 9, 109, 1098. 83BZ, 147-10 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, so we received two sets of submission. The one was last week. And in that, it provided more updated photos of the site condition and a revised site plan. However, as I was looking through the photos, the recent photos show that that there is an icebox that's located right on the pedestrian ramp, which is not consistent with the plan. The applicant indicated that it needs to be removed and are requesting to defer this until that icebox is removed.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to defer this.
I actually, before I do that, I also want to make sure the commissioners, you were okay with the revised site plan? Because here, we do not have a trash enclosure per se, but we have an area which is an open area where the trash bins are located. I just want to make sure commissioners, you are all okay with that? Or do you want a gate to close that area? Or do you want a specific enclosure for the trash receptacles? I could go either way. I just want to get a read from the commissioners.
I think, I'm leaning towards it being enclosed in an enclosure. You know, unless there is some serious issue preventing the construction of some sort of enclosure. Because I don't want to set a precedent where other applicants come in and then use this as a reason, an example, showing that, well, you approved something without an enclosure, so why not approve it for us? And I think that even in very constricted lots, where the shape of the lot was such that you could not, you know, put a full concrete enclosure, we have accepted a fenced-in enclosure, but we still said you must have an enclosure of some sort. And so therefore, I think there should be an enclosure here as well.
Okay. I would agree on the enclosure. I think they do have the room for a proper enclosure. But I would certainly agree with an enclosure because we have had that as the precedent. And it serves a greater purpose than just a fence. In that it does like keep vermin out. It's just more effective. So I think I prefer an enclosure myself.
Any comments from Commissioner Sheta or Commissioner Yu?
No, I do agree. And I just want to add that the DEC SPAR report indicated some conditions regarding the removal of the monitoring system, the monitoring wells, and the other elements associated with the PAST spell. So I'm not sure if we're going to include this on the resolution or they're going to add him to the plans. I don't know. Which way the board prefers to go. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll look into that. Yep. And commissioners, look into that also. Commissioner Yu, do you have any comments?
I agree on the trash enclosure. I think we didn't comment on it before because there's a big remediation shed. And so we were waiting for that to be removed. And now that we see it, it does seem like there's no reason to not require it here. I have nothing further.
And the enclosure would be typical masonry enclosure?
Or a residential fence?
Or a residential PVC.
I mean, I think you have space for a masonry enclosure.
Masonry enclosure. I agree. There's a room for it. Okay. I don't have to say, I want to, I appreciate the improvements that the applicant has made. The application, when it came before us, it was in a very horrible state. And the applicant, the property owner and/operator has cleaned up the site very well. So I truly am appreciative of that. And this is just another last little bit of putting it all back together. So it will have to be deferred to January. Okay. And our project manager will get back to the applicant stating, clarifying what documentations need to be provided for the January vote. Thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, next item, 2018, 154BZ, volume 2, 966 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. So this was an extension of time. So I make a motion to approve. There was no submission required. Motion to approve for an extension of time for four years from the date of the expiration of the prior ground to complete the construction and obtain a CO.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta? You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number 11, 2018, 167BZ, volume 2, 1133 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. Also, no submission was required. I make a motion to approve an extension of time for four years from the date of the expiration of the prior grant and to complete construction and obtain a CO.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Thank you. Application has been granted. Item number 12. 2021, 64BZ, 205207 Graves and Neck Road, Brooklyn. We received a request to withdraw?
Yes. Yes. So with that, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been withdrawn. Looks sorry. 2022, 42A, 30 Page Avenue, Staten Island.
All right, we're waiting for DOT sign off, which we'll have to put it on for a second call for tomorrow for the vote. And there will be a vote tomorrow.
Chair, I'd just like to say, if we could tentatively schedule it for the end of the calendar today in case we do receive something?
Okay, all right. Let's tentatively hold for today. Let's do that. Got it? Even better.
And if nothing's received, we will state at the end of today's calendar that it will be deferred for the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 2023, 20BZ, 1628 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. So make a motion to approve with the condition that the removal of exterior walls and/or joints in excess of those indicated on the BSA approved plan shall avoid this special permit.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta, you're muted.
Oh, apologies. Yes, I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
You think your application has been granted. Next item is appeals calendar. New cases, 2023, 40A, 9-11 Sutton Avenue, Sutton Street. 9-11 Sutton Street.
Okay, so this is an application by the Department of Buildings, a pursuant to New York City Charter 645B, sorry, 645B 3E and 6666A to modify a certificate of occupancy number 3202851885 issued in 2012 on May 19th, oh, sorry, May 29th of 2012 for the subject site. This is a loft law building. It is located in an M12 zoning district. I apologize for the incorrect representation on the lineup. It should be M12. So this is an existing four-story plus basement loft building that has been occupied as a residential use since 1980. DOB had issued an initial certificate of occupancy back in November 19th of 2008. And that is a certificate of occupancy number 301091734F for 31 dwelling units used Group 2 IMD located on floors 1 through 4th floor of the building. And in that 2008 certificate of occupancy, it listed the basement use, as I quote, "ordinary storage, accessory, recreation room, zoning use group 2." After that, a certificate of occupancy was granted in 2012. And that is the certificate of occupancy DOB is requesting be modified. And in that certificate of occupancy, it listed 10 dwelling units in the basement as Class A apartments and mechanical rooms and storage zoning use group 2 with a total of 48 Class A apartment buildings in that building. The appellants architect submitted, actually, I don't know if they're appellant or not. It's the property owner. Sorry, I stand corrected. The appellant in this case is DOB. I know. I know. I'm just so used to the other way around. So my mistake. Sorry. The property, the property owner's architect submitted a plan set dated 11/6/2006, which was professionally certified to obtain the certificate of occupancy back in 2008. And I want to come back to this plan set later in the discussion, but for now, note that the plan set was professionally certified. In 2022, owner filed a narrative to the Loft Board to legalize 15 additional units. In reviewing the narrative, the Loft Board identified 10 basement apartments. And on March 23rd, 2023, DOB notified the owner that the 2012 CO was issued in error and asked the owner to demonstrate how the objections will be addressed within a set time period. And that's where we are today. So DOB states that based on the 2008 certificate of occupancy, the subject building was not authorized to have any residential unit in the basement. And DOB did not have the statutory authority to permit any residential use in the basement. The owner's representative's position is that DOB's request to modify the sorry, 2012 CO should be denied since the 2012 CO was legally permitted and complied with prior approvals and pertained to zoning resolution section, building code, and multiple dwelling. And the owner's rep refers to the 2008 approval plan, as I mentioned earlier. And specifically, the owner's rep in its letter states that, I quote, "The use of the basement for dwelling purposes was clearly established at the time by both A, the drawing and the owner highlighted this section, submitted and approved by the department, which unequivocally showed the first floor apartments as duplexes to the basement with recreation rooms, bedrooms, and full bathrooms. And B, schedule of occupancies from the CO which confirms such residence uses in the basement." And furthermore, the letters from the owner's representative states these occupancies were further confirmed by the final CO issued for the project on November 19, 2008. And the request for the modification should be denied because Loft Board had also authorized the residential use prior to filing the 2012 amended CO. So according to the owner, the current IMD registration for residential units includes these basements. So here, based on reviewing all of the documents, these are my questions. Regarding the referred plan the owner's representative relies on, that was submitted and approved by DOB as indicated in owner's letter. The plan dated 1/16/2006. It's a preferred set of plan. Job number 301091734 was professionally certified as stamped. And to obtain the 2008 CO, the owner's representative submitted a PW1 and the plan, the dated 2006 dated plan, and Schedule A form. It was an ALT1, and the application form marks no for Directive 14 acceptance requested. It was a change of occupancy and use, and also the proposed building stories is listed as four. One can assume that the plan set, since it was professionally certified by the Architect of Record, did not undergo a full plan review at DOB. And Schedule A form, which is submitted by the Architect of Record, lists the proposed uses per floor as indicated in the 2008 CO for the subject site. And for the basement, it is listed as ordinary storage, accessory, recreation room. And there's, and no reference to this is listed. And there's no reference to it as an IMD unit as shown in the residential units on floors 1 through floor. Yeah, 1 through 4, I'm sorry. In 2012, the owner's representative tried to put the approved plan in place in 2012, and a new ALT1 no work and a Schedule A was provided. And in 2012 PW1, the Architect of Record revised the proposed number of stories to five from four. So while I'm not unpacking the 2008 certificate of occupancy for now at this hearing, but the 2008 professionally certified plan also do not match the 2008 certificate of occupancy list. And so this 2008 certificate of occupancy lists four floors and the basement as just storage and others, whereas the drawings that were submitted as part of that entire package shows in the basement, they were bedrooms, but they were professionally certified and did not undergo the review. So and although the 2012 grant was based on a 2008 plan, it does not make the 2012 plan valid. It was based on a certification that was misrepresented and was not billed pursuant to Schedule A 2008 CO. Regarding the owner's representation, reference to the 2/23/2012 audit indicated as Exhibit E, question, which questioned the increased number of dwelling units from 31 as in 2008 CO to 43 or 39 dwelling units, it wasn't clear. While it was cleared, it is a subject of speculation as to what documents were provided to resolve the matter. And was it professionally certified? Was the professionally certified plan that provided to clarify that issue? And I don't want to get into that. That's just an information that's provided without much documentation. The owner's representation rep also relied on the IMD registration. However, the registration renewal invoice that was submitted to BSA, it's from 2022 and not from 2008 or prior to 2012. So I definitely do not think the owner's representative documentations sheds any clarity as to why this should be, why we should not consider DOB's request to modify it. I think DOB's position based on the documents and how I reviewed it seems absolutely justified, that there was an error made back in 2012, and it should be corrected to reflect the Schedule A that was issued as part of 2008 certificate of occupancy. I don't need a clarification from Department of Buildings. That is, since the Architect of Record selected no for Directive 14, under what circumstances would DOB have inspected the site?
Madam Chair, may I interrupt you one second?
Sure.
I got, I received an email from Felicia Miller. I don't know that she's not able to join. I emailed Carla. Just, is the Mr. Schmitt?
Yes.
Do you have a representative in the room?
He is, yes.
Okay, so I don't know if that's a problem that Felicia can't get in. Counsel?
They can't, they can't miss her. They can't hear you unless you're on a mic.
I sent it to Carlo to see if she can get in.
I know that there was a Zoom link that everyone had to, anyone who wants to, needs to click on or register prior Friday. I did circulate that around. I don't know if that's the problem.
Justice's hand is up.
Just to inform the board, there is currently a VPN outage which may which may have caused this. I can send Felicia Miller a direct invite to this hearing, but the VPN outage might be preventing her from using Zoom at her office.
Okay, well, so what we could do is give her, hold on. What we could do is give her a phone number. She can call in if she'd like to and not have to use the VPN.
Yeah, but you can call in to listen.
And speak, right?
When it's the public hearing, but most of the time, DOB would like to hear the board's comments during review session. So if we could just throw up the phone number really quickly?
Hold on. What is the phone number?
The number is 6465588656. Let me text, let me email Ms. Miller.
And just for the record to the public, anyone who's listening and watching, we are not noticing a public hearing right now. We are only displaying our dial-in instructions for anyone who is having technical difficulties joining Zoom. We are still in a review session.
So you can use your cell phone and call that number and hear in to what we're saying. Which again, if they're on Zoom, they can hear us anyway, but.
Yeah.
I guess it's up to the board, but do we want to proceed with the rest of the comments or do you want to take a break?
Can we just give it like three minutes to see if this person can attend by phone?
Okay. Yeah, if we need to start mentioning, we may have to, just this particular, we may have to start because people didn't hear. And that could be the owner's representative also.
Well, Mr. Scaronno is in the room. I see as an attendee. And Mr. Cassad, I don't see Mr. Andrew Cassad, he is in the room, the owner's attorney. He is in the room.
Okay. All right, let's give it at least just a few minutes to make sure everybody joins in to hear this and then we can. Counsel, do I need to start from the beginning or should I just pick up from where I left?
I don't believe you need to start from the beginning because all of the comments are live streamed on YouTube. So DOB does have the opportunity during our break to catch up on anything that has been missed. DOB has been given the dial-in instructions and let's just see if they join and we'll take more.
And we also have a DOB representative in the room, so. Could you please speak in the mic?
I'd ask that he actually not address the board right now because we are still in a review session. So the DOB representative, it's not the time for comments.
And I would further it saying DOB seems to be properly represented at the time and shows that, just like everyone else in the public, the, just like everyone else in the public, DOB is given the same right to hear this then as everyone else. Fortunately, we have one, a member of DOB here, so I think we are all set.
So, okay, let's proceed then. We have a representative here. Yeah, yeah.
I don't understand.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm sorry. Do we know the status of Ms. Miller's joining? Because the point of pausing is so that she can.
She's been given, she's been given the dial-in instructions. No one has attempted to dial in. So we can proceed and maybe we'll take an extended break during the end of the review session, the beginning of the public hearing.
And as always, we're always open to the applicants reaching out to say they need a moment. And if she does, she can reach out and say the same, just like any other applicant.
Okay. Okay, so in addition to all the information that DOB provided and the applicants provided, I also went through the various relevant statutory authority that DOB has. Some DOB cited and I just want to pick up. And I looked through them in terms of the applicability. And I look, as I look at the zoning resolution sections, it makes it very clear, section, for example, zoning resolution, section 41-11, which clearly says new residential uses are not permitted in M12 district. And so a change of use from recreation and storage in basement as stated in 2008 CO. And, you know, by the way, it says use group. Though it lists as use group 2, such uses are accessory uses to the principal use, that is, the residential use is located on the first floor and you have the accessory uses in the basement. Those are not meant to be habitable spaces. So converting such accessory use to principal use, in this case, it would be a residential use, would not be permitted pursuant to zoning resolution section 41-11. With regards to section 52-40, which is enlargements or extensions. Uh, with regards to section four fifty two dash forty, uh, which is enlargements or extensions. Uh, um, the applicability of that, uh, which is extension of non-conforming use um to allow residential use um on the subject side in the basement. Since uh I'm questioning the two thousand eight professionally certified plan and the mismatch to a two thousand eight certificate of occupancy. Um, the units in the basement are not lawfully allowed to be occupied as residential units. And therefore, um, there is uh no continuation of a non-conforming use. And thus zoning resolution, section fifty two dash forty is not applicable uh as I uh read it. With regards to um M D L, which is uh two, two eighty one, which was specifically created for interim multiple dwelling. Um, and this is regarding legalization of uh interim uh multiple dwelling uh conversions of C and M lock. Uh, uh, of buildings in commercial and manufacturing zoning districts to residential uh use. If you look at the section of M D L two eighty one, section five, it says that it cannot um uh allow residential units that are located in the basement or cellar. Um, so at no point do we would have had the authority um under pursuant to M T L two eighty one uh five, which was added into the M D L back in twenty ten. So it was very much in play in twenty twelve. Um, and thus would not have been allowed. Um, so I would concur with D O B's um justification. Um, and I would agree that a modification to the two thousand twelve certificate um certificate is warranted. Um, those are my uh comments. Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair, for those comments. I found them very informative. Um, I want the parties, I want to see if there's something that the parties would agree on. Do they agree? Because it seems like there's a little back and forth that there was an error in twenty twenty twelve, that the decision D O B was an error. Um, finally, I'd like to, some questions answered. Uh, was there a full plan review back in twenty twenty twelve? I know that this was professionally certified, but I'd like to know with the D O B if they are going to agree that they reviewed this or not. Um, I want to know uh from the owner and the D O B if there's an argument as to whether or not the owner acted with clean hands or not. Did they uh know that something was wrong? Did they purposely, uh, is there anything that they did that can be argued to be uh on clean hands? And I, I say this because um there is a question as to whether or not the owner had an appropriate reliance on the Department of Buildings' findings. So these are the questions that I'd like to have answered by the uh, by the owner and the Department of Building. I have other comments, but I want to reserve them uh until further. And I do agree with much of what you said, Chair. I just have these outstanding uh questions that I think uh deserve an answer. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Oakley Brown?
Um, I, I think that the chair's comments have been especially thorough. And so I don't really have anything additional to add except to say that I also support the chair's comments. I do not find the building owners papers to be particularly persuasive. I feel that since the plans for the two thousand and eight C of O were professionally certified, they don't have the same evidentiary weight as D O B plan examined and approved plans. And because what was actually on the two thousand and eight C of O does not correspond to those two thousand and six submitted plans that showed apartments in the basement. When in fact, the two thousand and eight C of O does not have any living habitable space in the basement at all, having only storage and un-accessory recreation room, not a series of accessory recreation rooms. There's nothing that basically validates the um claim by the building owner that apartments in the basement were approved or even partial apartments were approved in the basement. And so therefore, I don't find those arguments persuasive at all.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I, I believe this case should be as simple as that. Uh, point one, I believe D O B, in case they discover that they made an error, they are entitled to correct it. This is pillar one for me in the, on this case. And and the second point. Uh, and if you read through the uh, the, the owner's representative uh submission, you're gonna see that they have a belief that based on the two thousand twelve C of O, uh, that uh the, the basement apartments were legalized. I, I, when looking into that, I'm, I'm not sure if you, um, if you go through the submission from the owner rep. And this is page four, uh, like the second paragraph after it says specifically the apartment instant application should be denied in total because, and I read through point one. And 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 it says that why residential use in the premises is not permitted as of right. It has been authorized by the board, by the loft board, uh, prior to the filing of two thousand twelve. I, I'm not sure if the uh Board of Lofts had the authority. If, if this such use was not permitted as of right prior to two thousand twelve, that to the best of my knowledge, the only like city agency that has the authority to authorize such use was us, the B S A. And I'm not sure, I did read through the authority of the Board of Lofts. And it, it does say that they, their, their main task, and I'm reading from the uh, uh, Buildings website. The New York City Board, uh, Loft Boards regulates the legal conversion. So what it does, it regulates the legal conversion of certain lofts in the city. That, that being said, it means that, that such board, the Board of Lofts can come convert manufacturing buildings into residential, but legally, legally means that it should comply with the zoning resolution. And since I didn't see any grant from B S A on this case, I do believe that up until now, the owner doesn't have the right to put residential apartments in, in, in the basements. There is, there is also another statement uh after item six, where it says all the basement on, on page four. Again, I'm talking about the submission from the architect on page four. That parag, the second paragraph or the final one, which is therefore a light off. And and I read uh through the, like, the, that paragraph, which is all dwelling units proposed under the two thousand twelve C of O where number A legally permitted, B complied with, and what did comply with? All previously granted approvals pertaining to the premises. And number two, all pertinent sections of N Y C zoning resolution. I'm not sure where from the architect or the, the preparer of this statement got this from. I, I need him to explain to me why he believes that, that, that the use in the basement complied with all pertinent zoning sections, zoning resolution sections. And with the building codes, the nineteen eighty sixty eight building codes, I don't know, I can't think of that. But with the zoning resolution, I don't think this is the case. That being said, I believe where I stand right now is I'm in support of that D O B request to modify the two thousand twelve certificate of occupancy, because I do believe that it was issued in an error. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to, I actually have a question, sorry, before I go to you. Um, I have a question for, um, it's more of an academic question I have for uh D O B. And uh, the question is the two thousand eleven P W one, um, section number six D uh, under work type, um, the Architect of Record lists as no work. And when the number of stories is proposed to be changed from four to five and dwelling units from thirty one to thirty nine. Though, um, I mean, the P W one, um, that was provided by the property owner lists forty eight units. So there's a just little bit of discrepancy in the total number of units um that uh everybody's talking around. But my question is, would it not affect, even though it says no work, that the fact that there is add addition of a floor that's being mentioned, addition of unit, would it not affect egress and fire suppressant measures and et cetera? And would that, how would that qualify as no work? That's my question. And the other thing that I just want to bring to everybody's attention, when I was doing a Google, Google search, I came across rental listings of couple of units in the lower level, L eight and L three um that are indicated as rented. So I just kind of want to flag that. Um, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. So I want to start out by saying that I myself rented a ground floor apartment in uh the summer of twenty twelve, twenty eleven to twenty twelve for one year. I lived there with two roommates in apartment one oh six, I think. Um, and then subsequently, one of those same roommates, a good friend of mine, rented one of the basement apartments from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen. So I did spend a lot of time in the spaces in question. So regardless, to me, the crux of the application seems to be that no work application in twenty twelve or in twenty eleven. Obviously, work has to be done to convert what was presented in the two thousand six plans, which are duplex apartments into separate basement apartments. The apartment I lived in, I knew was a duplex before because I knew someone who knew the people that lived there before me. So we had the top floor and the bottom floor was now separate units. The stairs, the spiral stairs, they were gone. Um, obviously, new demising had to happen. Floor openings had to be closed, so the twenty eleven application seemed clear that it should have been, if it wasn't no work. It was because the work was clearly already done. So it was a legalization case. Does not seem that it was presented that way to uh the D O B by stating it was a no work application. And then, and I believe that that seems to be where the error comes in because the applicant is stating that this was as it was. And they're currently claiming that this was legalized prior to the twenty twenty eleven application. But the, the plans that were approved in two thousand eight clearly show something different than what the owner is trying to say existed already.
Excuse me, uh, General Counsel has his hand up. Um, Chase, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you. I don't mean to interrupt the testimony. Thank you. I just want to state for the record, uh, Commissioner Yun's uh prior history regarding her uh tenancy at this residence has been cleared by the Conflicts of Interest Board, uh, and her participation in this case is appropriate.
And anecdotal evidence is not.
Uh, I wouldn't even say anecdotal. Personal observations as commissioner are relevant to, um. It, it is in the charter that commissioners may make personal observations, uh, but she has no current or future uh business or financial relationship with the appellant, or sorry, the uh, the, the building owner or any of the parties. And uh, the Conflicts of Interest Board has been made aware of her prior tenancy and she has been uh cleared to participate in this appeal. That's all that needs to be said. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You may continue, Commissioner Yun. Okay, um, so I just want to go back. You, so you, you're stating is that um at one point, uh, the basement unit and the first floor, which was connected by a spiral staircase, was removed. And this was prior to the two thousand twelve uh request for a certificate of occupancy. And the plans are not matching the twenty twelve plan, plan is, sorry. The twenty twelve plans are not matching the two thousand six plans.
I have to double check the twenty twelve plans. I'm looking at the two thousand six plans, which clearly show the duplex connection. There's spiral stairs clearly indicated, both in the basement level and.
Right, the two thousand twelve shows the spiral staircase, right.
Anecdotally, I only know because someone, as I said, knew the person that lived there before me, who had the full apartment with the basement and told us stories about being in there. But we lived in apartment one oh six, I'm pretty sure that was the unit. And there were no spiral stairs and no connection to the basement from our unit. You had to go into the, the basement or the cellar, I believe it is, in order to access those apartments separately. Um, so for me, separate from my, I mean, my experience tells me that these were no longer duplex units by the summer of twenty eleven because I lived in a ground floor apartment and I lived in this building. The no work application in twenty eleven seems like this is where, and maybe to Commissioner Vice Chair Shabeta's question and also to a lot of the comments that have been stated is the um transparency in which the applicant applied for this no work application in twenty eleven, when clearly work had to be done in order to convert those duplex apartments into separated apartments. All that said, I think in the owner's letter, there are six points being made as to, to summarize why the appeal should not be granted. But it seems like had this gone through an actual with work review back at the time that this was applied for, that it would not have created legal basement apartments in this property. So it seems clear to me that at the time of the application, that these would never have been considered legal based on that change in the M D L from twenty ten. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And if I may, just for the record, distill some of the board's comments and questions for both of the parties. Um, what, what is the meaning of professional certification or directive fourteen review? Uh, when are those types of reviews permitted by or allowed by the Department of Buildings? When are they not permitted or allowed by the Department of Buildings? How do those types of reviews relate to any of the filings in this application or this appeal? Uh, what aspects of the filings were actually reviewed by the Department of Buildings and which were not uh therefore self-certified or independently reviewed by a third party? Uh, what about the job can or cannot be self-certified? And which aspects, uh, plan, filing, sign off, et cetera? And then are self-certifications ever allowed for such types of works involved in this appeal such that? Um, is it a ministerial error in the filing such that these uh apartments could have been created per uh or permitted pursuant to a full plan review by the Department of Buildings? Was the filing of the application a ministerial error? Um, or does the Department of Buildings never allow this type of work to be done pursuant to this type of filing?
That's a lot of questions. Um. And also, I think over time, I'm sure some of these criterias have changed, uh, and in or, or more, more than changed, they've been clarified. And and it's a process that is always uh being improved and uh worked upon. So um, I, I just want us to be also be mindful of that, what applies today and what applied then may have been slightly different. Uh, but be that as it may, as Commissioner Yun pointed out, and I also stated, by M D L, under no circumstances, basement units would have been permit, permitted. Um, um, residential units in the basement, uh, in, in an interim dwelling unit, ma, uh, multiple dwelling would have been permitted, so. All right, uh, should we go on to our regular calendar, right? Generally, that's what we'll do and then we'll come back to public hearing and then we will hear um this case as the first public hearing case.
Okay. So special order calendar, item number sixteen, one seventy five, ten B Z, volume three, thirty four hundred, Baychester Avenue of the Bronx.
Okay, so um, the initial hearing on this application was uh last heard on July twenty fourth. And the applicant has submitted its response to the comments that were raised at the last hearing. Um, also, an update on the violation has been provided. Uh, with regards to the site improvement photos, uh, from the photos provided, it is evident that the building and the walls have been painted. Vacuum machines have been relocated um inside uh the lot line and the banner signs have been removed. Um, tire racks also have been removed from the outside area and the trash bins um is now stored somewhere. I don't know where, but it's not at least outside the building. Um, so my question is, where has the sta, trash bin been relocated to? And it needs to be indicated in the plan. However, it is not clear when comparing the recent photos with the initial site photos, the condition of the graffiti that was on the wall fronting uh Tillotson, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Avenue. Um, if, and I don't know if it, if that has been removed or not. With regards to the revised plan that has been submitted, um, uh, it shows an existing air tower and freestanding sign at the corner of Tillotson and Baychester. Um, and that seems to be located outside the lot line. Uh, so the applicant needs to confirm if, if that is the case. And has the existing vacuum from the Tillotson, um, Tillotson entryway been removed? And I would like to get an idea. Tilletson entryway been removed, and I would like to get an idea of the timeline for constructing the trash enclosure. Those are my comments for this application. Uh Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh thank you, Chair. I have nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay, um Commissioner Sheta.
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Yun.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Item number seven, I'm sorry. Item number seventeen, seven thirteen twenty eight B Z, four twenty five Vanderbilt Avenue, Staten Island.
Okay, the last hearing on this application was held on October thirtieth, and the applicant has made its submission in response to the comments that were raised. Uh revised plans have been submitted, uh addressing the comments. Um now, I would like the applicant to provide a detail of the bollards. Want to ensure that the bollards are grounded and are going to be bolted and not um and they're not going to be movable. There are very specific kind of bollards that we have asked. Um applicants to consider. These are generally like very solid looking boulders. I think they have cement in it. And you have to kind of embed it into the ground. You, it's not just bolting it from above ground because otherwise it can just be moved or be dented over time. So please provide a detail of the bollard and um. I do have a question regarding the vehicular flow based on the proposed curb cut uh realignment and the um. And Vanderbilt Avenue, is the volume of vehicles traveling westbound expected to be more to access the site? And the reason I'm asking this question is since Vanderbilt is a two-way street. The proposed curb cut relocation, would it not result in a sharper left turn onto the site? And that's why I'm asking that question. Um Vice Chair Shabeta.
You muted.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
I noticed. Thank you, Chair. I I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay, uh Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. The only thing I have is regarding the uh. The trench system, the applicant indicated that uh in order for them to like uh get it finalized, you need to submit to D E P and D E P will review. So I would like them to add a note saying that locations and configurations of trench drains. And store drainage elements indicated on these plans are preliminary. Final locations and configurations of stormwater drainage system, including detention basins. Dry wells and floor and trench drains will be subject to review and approval by D U D E B. That's, that's all what I have. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to request that you um send that language to.
I'm, I'm doing cut and paste right now to send it.
All right, thank you. Um Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay. All right, um next case.
Seven ninety nine eighty nine B Z, volume three, one forty fourteen seventy, Bruckner Boulevard, Queens.
Unknown caller.
Shoot, sorry.
All right, so the initial hearing.
Bruckner Boulevard, the Bronx, I'm sorry.
Okay, the initial hearing on this application was uh held on October thirtieth, and applicant has submitted its response to the comments that were raised at that hearing. Um so far, everything that's been submitted. I am satisfied with it. I really don't have any additional comments. Um Vice Chair Shabeta.
Satisfied with the application. Nothing further from me.
Okay, um Commissioner Artley Brown.
I was happy to see that they updated the application regarding the existence of the two buildings, and they actually revised the statement of facts and findings to state the same thing. I have no additional comments.
Okay. So you're satisfied?
Yes, I am satisfied.
All right, um Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank the applicant for the very responsive submission, and I'm satisfied with the application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I'm satisfied.
Okay, great. Thank you.
New cases, item number nineteen eighty four oh eight B Z, volume two, sixty seven twenty, Main Street, Queens.
All right, uh we have received proof of service of initial filing and hearing notices, um and we have a community board approval. Uh for this application. This is an application for an extension of term of a previously approved variance for a continuous operation of an automotive gasoline service station. Um it expired, the certificate of, um no, the, the, the term expired, I'm sorry, on October twenty eight, twenty eighteen. And um the applicant is also requesting an amendment to erect a canopy and a waiver of board's rule. Um so uh we have received the proof of continuous uh use. Um I was satisfied with it. Uh compliance chart were um was provided with the statement of fact that seemed fi- um pretty thorough. I have a question with regards to the signage. For existing and proposed plan, there was a total of non-illuminated signage of hundred and four square foot. And a forty-four square foot um uh wood um. Or illuminate, uh for illuminated, I'm sorry. However, it does not include the proposed canopy signage tagged uh number eight on the plot plan and Plan Sheet A oh oh six. The reason I'm stating that is at the end of the day, all of these should add up to less than um the permitted amount of um street signage, and that analysis is not clear. Uh also, based on the site photos provided, there uh there is um uh there is an existing banner. And that needs to be removed because that has not been accounted in the analysis and it's not permitted also. Um so other than these minor corrections, I'm overall satisfied with this application. Uh Vice Chair Shabeta.
I agree with your comments, Chair, but I'm also satisfied with this application.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Yun. Uh I'm sorry, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Uh the only thing is I saw on um Google View that there were some vans and trucks parking on site. I'm not sure if they are related, so I'm asking the client for clarification. I would say that I did look at the site in person. Uh last week and I couldn't see uh these kind of like trucks and 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 uh parking vans. But just in case maybe they are in and out, so I'm asking them to clarify whether they are related to the site or not. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. The only comment I had is that the previously approved plans show a six-foot-high wood fence. Uh it does seem that there's still a six-foot-high wood fence in the back. The nineteen forty-eight resolution, I believe, called out a brick masonry fence as a requirement and. But the plans that were approved previously show a six-foot-high wood fence. And so just noting that discrepancy is a prior condition, it seems that the wood fence is in decent condition, so I have no objections to it, but um.
We just need to clean it up.
Maybe we could clarify that.
Yeah, all right. So yeah, sometimes these older plans, I mean, not sometimes, most of the time, these older plans do get superseded with some of these. Elements and we need to make sure we're not including the superseded elements along with what it has super. Good point. Okay, good. Thank you. Next case, please.
Eighty-five ninety-nine B Z, volume two, eleven oh six Metcalf Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay, so we have received proof of service of initial filing and hearing notice also has been provided. Um on this one, the Land Use Committee voted to approve uh with conditions that the gas station uh be not allowed um. It said that the gas station not allow any businesses or entity that are unlicensed, like the recycling collection, to operate on their property or sidewalk. Um I looked through the site photos, I couldn't locate any, so um if the applicant could clarify that. Or the members of the public from the Community Board when they join in. So this is an application for an extension of term of a previously approved uh variance uh for a continuous operation of an automotive service station. Uh it expired on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and the extension of time to obtain certificate of occupancy also expired on thirty, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And the applicant is also requesting a waiver of board's rule. There is a little bit of an um inconsistency with the zoning floor area for the existing building. Uh between the zoning chart and the statement of fact, so please um correct that. Uh with regards to the proposal, I remember this was reviewed by the prior board. Very minutely, and there were a lot of issues and a, and it was put on a short leash. Um I'm, I'm happy to see that the applicant, uh the property owner and the rep has maintained the site in good condition overall. And um and and it's um addressed, and has addressed uh all of the board's comments. Uh the only thing I would say that the planting at the corner of the street intersection is overgrown and needs to be trimmed. Which may have been trimmed by now because it was, we were looking at the fall photo. And the landscaping around the site, it, it is in very good condition. I remember reviewing this and the, as part of the prior, prior board, uh the landscaping needed a lot of. Um care and it has been done. So. Um I just have a couple of questions with regards to the violation. There are two open E C B violation. And that was for an illegal car wash. And I looked through the street view and I also looked at the site photos that the applicant has provided. I did not see any structure, so I would like the applicant to clarify that. Um Vice Chair uh Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further from me.
Okay, Commissioner Artley Brown.
Um I just want to note that I have passed this site periodically, like every few months since the last grant. And while the submitted photographs may show a site that is in pretty good order, I must say I have passed the site when there have been. Store, clearly storage items in that side yard that's actually a budding, I guess, is that uh. Soundview or Bronx River Road, I'm not sure which is that side street that's adjacent to the Bronx River Parkway.
Oh, the Metcalf?
Uh yeah, Metcalf. And that has been full of items that are.
Watson or Metcalf?
No, not Watson. Actually, it's probably Metcalf. Um it, it has been full, that fenced-off area that I believe we wanted it to be landscaped or empty. And I have seen it at times full of bags of could-be recycling. I don't know if that's what the Community Board was referencing. Some clarity would be good. However, um the site has been operating continuously that I can attest to. And so I do know that we did go over this site with a fine-tooth comb because of the condition in terms of. You know, garbage and storage and stuff like that. And so that's why I want to know particularly what the Community Board was referring to, if it's possible.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That is very helpful. Thank you very much. Um Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. My comment is related to the luminous grid diagram provided. Uh it's, it's very like. Brief, we just have some readings along the residential lot line in the back. Uh I have a question for them. Is this based on readings? Or uh I mean measurements or just modeling? And did it take into account the light pool? Let me, let me. Share my screen, maybe it's a, it's gonna help clarify more.
You can see, read your notes.
Yep, I, I talking, uh I'm talking about that one, the area light. If you look at the. The picture they submitted.
Mm-hmm.
I still can see that. Light pool, and if we look at Google. It's here. So it's kind of weird for me if I go back to the PDF. That if someone has a light pool right here and he gets two readings of zeros just right next to it. So I just need them to clarify that. Other than that, I'm satisfied with the application. Thank you.
Um when you were showing the Google street view, I just saw where that car wash was.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Can you bring it back up?
Yeah.
Sure.
I tried looking for it. I couldn't find it. There's the car wash with those uh.
Oh, yes.
Giant hands. Okay. All right, uh maybe the photo was taken very strategically to bypass it, but either way, that has to go.
Uh oh, oh, let me bring the photo. There is, there is a photo that's uh probably more inclusive than that. One sec.
Yeah, it's not there in any of the photos that were submitted, so uh it may have been a very recent addition or it was removed, but either way, it just cannot be there. Definitely.
Yeah, you see, this is, this is a view from far.
Yeah.
I can see a car wash here. So apparently, maybe they took it off, took it away. I, I don't know.
Okay, definitely cannot be there. So that needs to be removed, and that would be a condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. The only thing I have to add is that there's a typo in the statement of facts on your signage chart. For Metcalf Avenue on the non-illuminated, it states that there's three hundred and thirty-two square feet of signage, but it's, I think it's. You gotta move the point.
Yeah.
Move the point over. I have nothing further.
Thank you. See, we read through everything that is submitted. Okay, thank you. Um let's go to the appeals case.
Appeals calendar, new cases, twenty nineteen thirteen A, volume two, twenty-nine Ryerson Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, uh proof of service of initial filing and hearing was provided. I do not have the Community Board vote on this. Um this is an application um uh seeking an extension of time to complete construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy. By December seventeen, twenty twenty-three on the subject side. And in twenty nineteen, board had granted the right to continue um construction based on the common law doctrine of vested rights to complete the construction of a hotel in a manufacturing district. So the applicant is seeking an extension of time for two years. Uh twenty-five percent of the construction is complete and quite a bit of money has been expended. Um.
It's not ninety-five percent?
Oh, sorry, ninety-five percent.
Okay.
I was just gonna say. I don't know why I'm very dyslexic today. I have it in my notes. It says ninety-five. I'm reading it as twenty-five. I'm really sorry. My apologies. Ninety-five percent of the construction is completed and quite a bit has been expended on this, over fifty-five million. And the applicant is requesting two years to complete the construction and obtain a C O. Um there are open violations. I just would like the applicant to clarify uh what action it is taking um to address these violations. But other than that, I have no other concerns or comments on this. Um Vice Chair Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, did you say anything? I couldn't hear you.
No, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Vice Chair.
Yes, we can hear you.
So I was satisfied with this application.
Commissioner, you're bouncing in and out. Um.
I was.
Let, let me go to Commissioner Artley Brown and then we'll, we'll come back to you, Vice Chair Shabeta. Okay, all right. Go ahead, Commissioner Artley Brown.
So as to the. Third prong of this application, the findings of serious loss. They did initially make that finding the first time it came before the B S A, and I had them update the finding and. As in addition to a loss in relative value of an office building project versus the hotel project. Since the building is almost complete, there's now also a higher amount attributed to the demolition of the existing. Off a hotel partitions that would be required to change this building over to an office building. And so that would result in a total loss in value of eleven point one million dollars, and I feel that they have made that binding as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Um Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh does this work? Can you guys hear me now?
Perfect.
Great. So I, I have nothing further to add. I'm satisfied with this application.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Same here. I'm satisfied with the application.
Okay, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I'm satisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Item number twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, fourteen A, seventeen oh seven Richmond Terrace, Staten Island.
Okay, so we receive proof of service of initial filing and hearing notices. Um. Community Board has not scheduled this hearing yet. Um I'm told that um it expected uh to be scheduled sometime in January.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is an application pursuant to zoning, pursuant to GCL thirty-six for an existing commercial building, fronting on an unmapped street, which would be Richmond Terrace. Per Zola, the existing use is classified as G two and auto body collision or auto repair facility. I would like the applicant to provide a little bit of narrative regarding the prior and existing use. And from the FEMA flood map, it is not clear whether the site is in a in a flood zone. I think it is in Zone X, but I would like the applicant to clarify that. And also what was not clear if Richmond Terrace is a CCO street. Fire department had issued a letter of objection with comments on October twenty-sixth. But we also received a fire department approval for the spray booth in, which is an approval that was granted by fire department back in twenty eighteen. And that was based on conditions. So the applicant needs to confirm that these conditions of fire department from twenty eighteen are still applicable and have been met.
Madam Chair, so I had emailed you a submission from the applicant yesterday and a cover letter this morning. A little discombobulated, but I asked him to address the fire department's letter. I sent that information to Chief Daly. I don't know if that responds to what his concerns are, but yeah, I mean.
My apologies. I did not get to review the submission that has been submitted.
It was a plan and about the parking or something.
Oh, yeah, I did see that. Yes, I did see.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if it, whatever with fire department, but I sent it to John Daly without the cover letter. Then when I received the cover letter this morning, I sent it again. And there was a cover letter that had some responses, so I sent that again to Chief Daly and also you, I think you and the commissioners.
Right.
Okay.
And we don't have comments therefore from any of our sister agencies regarding this.
Would be fire department. This is a GCL thirty-six.
Right.
There's also a hardship finding that he still has to make.
Yes, the hardship finding has not been made.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that would be more of an obsolescence, uh, you, not obsolescence. It's a continuous operation of a use that's been there. That and the hardship associated with relocating it. But the applicant has to make that statement. Vice Chair Shabeta.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with you on the FEMA flood maps submitted. First of all, they need to locate the site on that map. I, I do believe that the site is partially in a flood zone. I'll, I'll explain myself in, in, in a second. Let me first show them. Google view. I believe this is the site right here.
Yes.
And these, look at these tanks here. And then I'm gonna switch to this, these are the tanks. And I believe this is the site here.
So it'd be AE.
So partially in AE and probably partially in Zone X. So I need like clarification slash confirmation from them on, on that issue. Other than that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Yun.
Promotion.
Commissioner Yun. This is like, you know what, I, I think it's the, I'm sorry, it's the end of the year and my mind is my mind is already thinking of vacation. My sincere apologies.
Can I start preparing a resume?
No, you're still vice chair.
I'll prepare my resume, I suppose.
I am sorry, Vice Chair Shabeta and Commissioner Yun, please proceed.
Thanks. The only question I had, I, I didn't see the plan that was submitted last night, but I had questions about the response to FDNY comments beyond the spray booth approval, but for the GCL thirty-six. There was a reference to or at least in, our project manager had requested a BPP. And with, and the fire department had asked for dimensions to the nearest hydrant. So I, I was looking for some kind of plan that showed the right of way. I don't see that in the file. Also, I saw an AI one form that was submitted to D O B requesting the street status. But I believe that goes directly to the Borough President's Office, which is why we don't have any indication or clarity on whether Richmond Terrace is a CCO. So I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that the applicant needs to apply to the Borough President's Office for a street status letter to confirm the status of Richmond Terrace. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Vinroy, do you want to add anything to this? I mean, this is not
No, this is my case, not Vinroy's.
Right, okay, all right. So I just was, okay. Yeah, so the applicant just needs to provide a hardship statement. I don't know if the app, this is something, I haven't seen this applicant before. So if this is something new, maybe we can provide a sample or provide some guidance as to how to make that statement.
Move on?
Yes.
And the final case is twenty twenty-three fifteen A through eighteen A, eighty-two, eighty-two twenty-six South Conduit Avenue, Queens.
Okay, so proof of service of initial filing and hearing notice has been provided. We do not have any approval from the community board. This is an application for a GCL thirty-six waiver to develop for two family homes on the zoning lot, not fronting on a map street and a modification of the parking waiver. So. So with regards to the waiver of nine parking, the requirement is nine parking spaces. The applicant is proposing five. I just want to be very clear, pursuant to GCL thirty-six, board can't waive any of the underlying zoning regulations, including parking. So if this is a request that is going to be made at the DOB commissioner level, that is for the applicant to, to proceed. But at this point, I think the I, I'm not sure how the plan would have to document it. The plan would have to document a complying set, or we have to add a note that DO, that BSA is not waiving any of the underlying regulations, including parking requirement. And it is subject to DOB review and approval. Because we have no say on the underlying zoning on this matter. So that would need to be changed. I would like the applicant to submit the property lot subdivision documents separately because it is very difficult to read in the format it's been submitted. And the applicant needs to make an hardship justification for GCL thirty-six, which I think was provided, but it was not to didn't, it wasn't fully clarified. So I would like the applicant to make another attempt at it. And the applicant needs to submit a DOB approved. I think it states that they have a builder's payment plan, an approved builder's payment plan. That needs to be submitted with the, with the submission and needs to be part of our submission package that goes to DOB. I don't think we have received any comments from fire department on this. A DP has provided some comments, but that's about it. I don't have any update on the CCR status on this either. Was it type, is it a type twoable?
No, there is an EAS. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. So we had sent the EAS for WRP review and LPC review recently. Those, I predict are the only reviews necessary.
So that has been, information has been provided.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Vice Chair Shabeta.
Yeah, I was just returning some gifts, you know, for Christmas, knowing that Ms. Yun's gonna be the new vice chair. So but other than that, I have no further comments. Other than that, I have no further comments on this application.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I have no additional comment.
Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I guess I was a little bit confused on this application. There are several instances in the zoning analyses that state that a thirty-foot yard rear yard is provided, but it is never provided on any of the lots. Or that two park, it confirms in some of these charts that two parking spaces for each lot are provided when they are not. Also, in the statement of facts, in the second paragraph, it says the FAR of zero point five is permitted, which I believe should be zero point seven five. There's also a note in the statement of facts that says for new development with semi-attached residences, the first floor has to be ADA compliant, including wheelchair lifts and one ADA parking per first floor dwelling total for required ADA parking spaces. It doesn't seem clear to me where any ADA accessibility in the first floor units is provided, given that the first floor is set several feet higher than the grade. So I think, you know, the GCL thirty-six is before us, but there seem to be so many inconsistencies between the statement of facts, the zoning analyses charts and the drawings themselves that I end up confused about how compliance is being achieved in any of these regards. That's, those are my comments.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is we are not waiving any of the underlying regulations. So there has to be a very clear note provided in the plan that BSA is only reviewing the GCL thirty-six grant and not waiving any of the underlying applicable statutory regulations. And it's for DOB to make that determination and that would be part of our conditions also. But in the meantime, the plans have to show a complying set of plans with that note. And if they are showing non-complying, then that note still goes. And I think we need to internally discuss that and figure out exactly how we want them to submit the set of plans. Okay, all right.
Okay, so nothing else?
No, I think
Okay, and we haven't received DOT anything. So just for the record. But so far, so this concludes the public, this concludes the review session for December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Right. So we're gonna give about, how much time do we need? Ten minutes?
Eleven twenty-six right now.
So let's
Chair, would we like to give a slightly extended break to allow DOB council time to review the comments that they were not able to partake in during the review session?
Sure. Is ten minute adequate? Fifteen minutes?
He's right there.
Ten works for you? Okay, DOB representative here states ten is fine. So let's, ten, what, what is it? We're, we are at eleven twenty-seven, so eleven forty, yeah.
Resume at eleven forty?
Yeah.
Okay, for public hearing.
You.
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 Good morning, this is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The first item up is twenty twenty-three forty-eight, ninety-nine, one eleven Sutton Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. I think, uh, we.
So Mr. Cassadi.
Is your microphone on?
Who? Yeah, is my, can you hear me?
There you go, thank you, sorry.
Okay.
Everyone's microphone should be on, someone let Mr. Cassadi in. Cassadi, I'm sorry, I apologize, pronunciation of your name. But DOB will begin first.
Um, we have, um, maybe we can move this up a little bit, just so it's in the camera. Yeah, he's not in the camera.
No, Mr. Cassadi's in the camera, Mr. Schmidt needs to be in the camera.
Uh, prior to DOB starting, uh, just very briefly.
Uh, Mr. Cassadi, the board has to recognize you.
We have to go in.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, we have to, uh, start with DOB. And then we will go to the property owner and their team. Oh, that seems good. Yeah.
Ms. Miller's on the phone also, um, can you unmute? I don't know if she's going to speak along with Mr. Schmidt.
So I would, I will let Mr. James Schmidt to introduce his team, online, live, uh, everything.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is my microphone?
Yeah. Can, can everybody hear Mr.? Did you see a red light on the bottom?
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Schmidt, uh, press the, that button, there should be a red light on that microphone on the, on the, your podium.
Great, great.
Is it on?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Um.
Okay.
Madam Chair, uh, Shonda, uh, Vice Chair Shibata, um, Commissioner Otley Brown, uh, Commissioner Shada, Commissioner you, uh, Commissioner Yu. Thank you very much for having me here, um, my name is James Schmitz, I'm a attorney for the Department of Buildings. Uh, I have with me, I think, online, Ms. Felicia Miller, who is my boss, um, so, hello. Um, and I have a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to say here. Um, number one, I am very gratified, as I was a few weeks ago, to realize that the, the board has done such a thorough job of reading and understanding the submissions. Um, I think that the Department of Buildings case is extraordinarily simple, so I'm going to go through it just very, very quickly, and then get to the questions that, that, uh, you had all asked. Um, as discussed, ninety-nine Sutton Street is in a M-one dash two zoning district. Uh, residential occupancy is not allowed as of right for zoning resolution forty-four, I'm sorry, forty-one dash eleven. Uh, it's also, uh, disallowed under zoning resolution fifteen dash zero two one sub F. Um, and there's a way around that, however, which is that you can get your building declared to be a lawflaw building, which allows residences as long as certain requirements are met. Um, and the, the real question in this case is, were the requirements of multiple dwelling law section two eighty-one five met at the time the CO was issued? And are they met today, uh, which is sort of a new issue that, that I would like to discuss with the board a little bit. Um, the two thousand eight C, Certificate of Occupancy notes that the lowest floor of this building is a basement that is being used for ordinary storage and an accessory recreation. There's absolutely no mention of any dwelling unit, uh, even a partial dwelling unit on that CO. Um, in two thousand eleven, the owners, uh, ninety-nine Sutton LLC applied to officially turn the basement into a number of dwelling units. Um, and they're hoping to do so under the lawflaw. And the lawflaw, uh, was amended in two thousand ten to allow, uh, MDL, uh, two eighty-one five that allows for the creation of residential units in apartments as long as they are occupied for twelve continuous months between January first, two thousand eight and December thirty-first, two thousand nine. Um, and this building meets all of those requirements, except that MDL two eighty-one sub five says you cannot place additional dwelling units in the basement or the cellar. And that was the text, uh, that's the relevant text from two thousand ten, when the law was enacted, to two thousand nineteen, when it was amended. Um, as amended, you are allowed to have a dwelling unit in the basement, the cellar is still disallowed. And that's, that's relevant for reasons I'll get to in a moment. Um, we'd argue that, uh, because this is in the basement, um, this building did not qualify for lawflaw status, or at least these units didn't qualify for intermultiple dwelling status, uh, in two thousand twelve, when the CO was issued. Uh, they're not entitled to protection under multiple dwelling law section two eighty-three, which exempts them from most of the zoning resolutions, and as discussed, the existing zoning resolutions, uh, get in the way and, and prevent this from happening. Um, so therefore, we would seek to modify the two thousand twelve CO. Um, the owners, uh, council, or I guess actually Mr. Mr. Scranno, the architect for the owner, uh, in his written submission, pointed out that there was no new use here, that there was no new occupancy, there was, uh, no increase in non-conformity. Maybe that's true, but there is unquestionably the creation of dwelling units in the basement. Uh, and that is specifically not allowed under MDL two eighty-one five. Um, also, if we're talking about adding units to an existing lawflaw building, um, that would be governed by, uh, twenty-nine RCNY Rules of City of New York two dash oh eight. Again, twenty-nine RCNY two dash oh eight, sub G, Arabic one, Little Roman two. Uh, which states that in any building that meets the requirements of, uh, MDL two eighty-one four, which this one did at the time, uh, qualifying, uh, as an IMD building, occupants of any additional unit residentially occupied um, may also be covered under Article seven C of the, of the multiple dwelling law, that's the lawflaw, provided that those units meet the criteria under MDL two eighty-one five. So that's just sort of, uh, just a little technicality, two eighty-one five, as I read it, talks about the creation of units in the first instance. This, this twenty-nine RCNY two dash oh eight is talking about the creation of additional units in something that's already, uh, a lawflaw building. Um, but either way, you can't, you can't have a unit in the basement or the cellar, um, at least in, in two thousand twelve, when the CO was issued. Um, and I guess I'd like to respond to some of the questions, I guess all of the questions that were raised. Um, I do want to note that, uh, the board's general counsel asked several very good questions about professional certification and Directive fourteen. Those are very technical questions that, uh, I prefer to reserve for written submission later on, um, but they do need to be addressed, I agree with that. Um, I will note, um, and agree with, with, uh, uh, Madam Chair and Shonda, that the two thousand eight plan, uh, specifically the one from January sixteenth of two thousand six, it was professionally certified, it didn't seem to get full review. Um, I note that, uh, Madam Chairman identified that there were bedrooms, uh, on that plan, um, which again is contrary to the written two thousand eight CFO, which only talks about accessory storage and, and, um, recreation rooms. Um, and, um.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, DOB Council, Madam Chair, um, apparently, Mr. Cass, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt and, and correct me, General Counsel, if I'm appropriate, but apparently, the attorney for the lawyer sent an email, which I did not see, I just saw it, that they were requesting an adjournment because Mr., um, Mr. Scranno is unavailable, so I don't know.
It's too late.
Yeah, okay, I'm just letting you know, I forwarded to you, I.
When was this, uh, when was this request made?
Uh, eleven thirty-four AM.
No, no, this, no.
Uh, Mr. Scranno was in the, in the attendees room for this hearing.
Yeah.
at the beginning, at the outset of the review session and through the review session. I'm sorry, we're going to proceed. He is... Mr. Scranno, I believe, is a witness and not the representative. So, the owner's representative is here and prepared to proceed. Well, prepared to represent the owner, at least.
Thank you. I apologize for not seeing that earlier.
I don't want to interrupt or speak out of turn. I just, can I clarify my request?
When you'll be recognized, you will...
Okay, thank you.
Please let DOB proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. I apologize, Mr. Schmidt, also, Council.
That's quite okay. I absolutely understand why opposing counsel wants to request that. And I didn't mean to necessarily talk out of turn, but I was instructed to do so by the Board, that's all. No criticism, Council.
Can you go back to what you stated with regards to the 2006 plan from there? Because we had a little bit of disruption.
Sure. So, I'd like to, I have some audiovisual materials I'm going to try to present at the end. But one of the things I wanted to mention was that according to those 2006 plans, which are very blurry and kind of hard to read in the submission, it does appear that there are bedrooms, at least in the, I guess, the western side of that building.
All the units.
Yes.
All the units have a basement.
And as indicated, it seems like the 2008 CO may, I'm not going to commit myself to this, but it may have been granted inappropriately. Madam Chair, you asked how this could have passed inspection in 2008. That's a good question. If that was there, in theory, that should not have matched the CFO. I don't have an answer for that now. I will try to find that and respond to that in a written submission. Vice Chair Shibata had asked whether or not there was a full plan review in 2012. I don't have my copy of those 2012 plans in front of me. Again, I'll have to reserve that for written submission. But I am curious about that because I would think that anyone who was looking at this would spot the issue that we found now, right? There seems to be a problem. I note that the owner has noted in their written submission that there was an audit in 2000, I guess, prior to the approval of the CO, that they passed audit. But the issue that they raised in the audit was simply, where did these extra 10 dwelling units come from, right? There's no mention of the lawf law. There's no mention of 281-5. So I don't know that that issue was sort of like properly teed up for the audit to address. But that's, I just wanted to address that issue. So Commissioner Yu had mentioned, from her personal knowledge, that it seems like this may have been a legalization job. I don't know for a fact, but it gives that impression. One of the things that you can see on the 2006 plan, they've got bedrooms, but they don't, for example, have kitchens or full bathrooms. In order for something to be an intermultiple dwelling unit where a family lives independently, you need a three-piece bathroom, and you need a stove and a sink, right? So we're talking about gas work, we're talking about plumbing work. A fair amount of work would have to get done. So it does look like that was probably a legalization. And I think that addresses the question that was raised about whether or not this was a no-work permit and how that came to be done.
So you're saying it cannot be a no-work permit. It would have required...
So, my understanding is that, at least sometimes, I don't know if this is one of those cases, sometimes, you can, there can be a situation where, like, for example, the previous owner of a home, right? May have done some work without a permit. You're the new buyer. You get this house with this new feature in it that's not properly accounted for in the CO. And then you can file a work application to legalize that. I don't know how this property changed hands. I don't know whether that's appropriate in this context. But that's, it does look like this was work that had already been done. And I'd like to address some issues here with the basement. I think I've raised my hand on this. By the way, I just wanted to thank Ms. Matias for very helpfully giving me the password for the wifi a few moments ago.
Could someone let Mr. Schmidt's Zoom account into the room?
I don't see it.
All right. And then let me see if I can share my screen.
You see it?
Yeah, it's a little more than halfway down.
Sorry, everybody. It's been a moment since I've had to do this. Okay. So, we've got a question here.
I don't see it. You guys see it? The office sees it?
We just have a white screen right now.
Yeah, we just see a white screen. That's what I see.
That's less dramatic than what I had in mind. One second. What's that? There we go. How can I do this?
See it, yeah.
Okay. So here we have a question of whether or not the lowest floor in this building is a cellar or a basement. And just to refresh everyone's recollection, under Zoning Resolution 12-10, a basement is a story or part of a story where at least one half of its height is above the curb level. A cellar is where less than half of its height is above the curb level. So, here we have the Certificate of Occupancy from 2008. I'll note, as we discussed before, that this was ordinary storage and accessory recreation rooms. But, this, by the way, is from Sutton LLC's submission. We've got the basement over here. We're going to enhance that a little bit. And I'm going to note, by the way, this is one of the issues. So, the little diamond with the circle in it is a spiral staircase, right? And that indicates where the lower half of that duplex is going up. So, let's just count that up. So, we've got one... So, we've got six lower halves of a duplex apartment that supposedly get converted into 10 Class A apartments in 2012, right? So it's not just a question of, look, we have a couple of units that are duplexes and we simply cut them in half, you know, through the middle. It's, we cut some of them in half through the middle, and then some of the others, we managed to divvy up a little bit. But the real reason I wanted to show this to you is to save time in later submissions, which is the question of elevations, okay? So here, this is plans in 2011, submitted by Mr. Scranno. Again, we're looking at the basement. This is some of those units. And in particular, they've got a ceiling height of 8 feet, 8 feet 10 inches. That is, by the way, it seems to be consistent with the 2008 plans as well. That hasn't changed. It's just easier to see on this document. Here we've got a survey. This is on Sutton LLC's submission, page 45. This is a survey that had been updated, I believe, in February of 2023. We're going to zoom in just a little bit. We've got a basement elevation listed here as 18.55 feet above the reference point. Also in the survey, it's very hard to see, are these two little numbers, TC 2447 and TC 2558. TC stands for top of curb. That's 24.47 feet on the northeast corner of the building and 25.58 feet on the southeast corner. I'll do the math for you in just a second. All right. So, we've got a basement elevation of 18.5, or 18.55 feet. The basement height is 8 feet 10 inches. That's 8.83 repeating feet. So the ceiling is at 27.38 feet. That's for the basement. The grade plane is calculated by averaging those, that measurement from the one corner to the other corner. That grade plane is 25.03 feet. Now, this is why I went to law school. I didn't qualify as a fine artist. So we've got 18.5 over on the left-hand side of the screen. That's the floor. Got 8.83 as the height. 27.38 from that previous slide. And here we've got 25.03 feet. And if you do the math on that, it turns out that the finished ceiling of this floor is exactly 2.35 feet above the grade plane, and the finished floor is exactly 6.48 feet below the grade plane. That is, very, very clearly, it's not even a close question. This is a cellar. It's not a basement. And so our position is that the lowest floor is now and always has been a cellar, that it would have been unlawful in 2012 to occupy these as a basement. It also would have been unlawful to occupy it as a cellar. And even after the 2019 amendment that authorized you to have basement apartments, these are not basement apartments. Madam Chairwoman had mentioned that she had looked up this property on StreetEasy, or, I'm sorry, maybe not StreetEasy, but had looked up some of these apartments on rental sites. You can do that. I have done that. And you can look at the windows on those apartments, and you can see how far the height of this curb comes up. I'm not going to do that now because it would just take up too much time. But I do want to note that that does seem to bear out that this is, in fact, a cellar. And then that lets me circle back to, I guess, the last question I wanted to address, which was from Vice Chair Shibata, where he was asking about whether or not we felt that the owner had unclean hands. And I think, I don't want to take a, you know, very hard stance on this, but I certainly think an argument can be made, right? We've got six apartments that are somehow being on that lower floor, but are somehow being converted to 10. And there's no real explanation for how that happened. This was all done through professional certification, so there wasn't a full review. It was marked in 2011 as a no-work permit, when we know there had to have been both gas and plumbing work done. And we also know that the space seems to be very clearly a cellar. There was a survey, the numbers that I posted up here were from a survey that had been corrected and amended in 2023. The original survey from 2005 has different numbers. And if the Commissioners will recall, the difference between the actual measurements and what it would have to be to be a basement or a cellar is about two feet, right? They're about two feet off. And it turns out that those, that survey from 2005 seems to be exactly two feet in the right direction, exactly where they were.
I'm really glad you mentioned that. Can you expound on that in writing?
Oh, I certainly plan to. The reason...
Do you have that survey?
I do. Funny story about that. I was trying to get a hold of that because I wanted to see it. I knew it existed, and I wanted to get a hold of it. So I asked our Borough Commissioners Office in Brooklyn, can you help me get this survey? Can you help me get the files for this building? And I said, look, we've got a BSA hearing on Monday. Can you please, please, please hurry up, hurry up, and do this? They were very, very obliging. They reached out to the archivist, and the archivist said, oh, yeah. Mr. Schmidt requested that back in August. It's been in his office the whole time. And the answer is, yes, it was. And I felt very embarrassed about that. And I found this out, but I came into work this morning. It's not the best way to start the day. But I did, I did look at that survey and check that out. I did look at the 2000 plans, connected with the 2008 job. What the file does not seem to have, and I need to double-check it because I was in a hurry to get here, the file does not seem to have the 2006 plans that we were looking at, with the bedrooms on that lower floor. I'd like to hope that turns up. It would be nice to have it. But, but yes, the survey does seem to, from 2005, does seem to be off by a little less than two feet in such a way that I think, if I'm doing the math right, I think it would have looked like a basement at that time. Again, I don't know how much this was properly checked. I also don't know enough about surveying to know how probable it is that you air by two feet, right? I would like to think that's a pretty big number.
I'm sure you'll find that it is a pretty big number. I, but I'm sure that that would be something also that would be great to have in your written statement.
And by the way, I'll put all this stuff about the basement or cellar in a written submission as well. It just seems so much easier to do that visually rather than in writing, so. I have nothing further. I think our submission sort of speaks for itself.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners for the BSA, for the DOB team?
I'd just like the Board to note that Mr. Scranno is back in the waiting room and will be promoting him as a panelist.
And as Mr. Schmidt, you mentioned, our Council had a lot of questions, and so you will put that in writing.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
I guess I have a question, because I'm looking, I'm just going to share. This is from the building owner's submission. And it is page 40 something, 43, 44. This is an excerpt from the structural drawings from the, I believe, the 2006 submission. So, this is showing clearly a basement, right? It's indicating that the base plane is at 22.14. But I suppose, and my personal experience, having been in a basement apartment many times, is that the areaway is much taller than that when you're in the basement, and you're mostly just looking at a concrete wall that's a few feet away from you when you're in the basement unit. So that's not my recollection as drawn here on the structural drawing. But does it matter, since the MBL is clear that a basement or cellar unit is not allowed?
Right, right.
Like, the point of proving this, how does that bear weight on...
I just like going for extra points. The Commissioner is absolutely right, that as far as what happened in 2012, it makes no difference at all whether this is a cellar or a basement. If it was a basement, it's still no good. The reason that I bring it up is partially because I think there's a human reaction that says, well, look, that's technically wrong, but it's allowed now, and so what's the problem? And the answer from the DOB is, it was wrong then, and that's the problem, it was wrong then, and by gosh, we're going to stick with it. But the point is that it's also wrong now, and it's something that needs to be addressed. And Commissioner Yu, you pointed out those numbers from the loft drawing just now. That base plane of 20 feet and the calculation of the grade plane, those are precisely the numbers I get from the 2005 survey. So it's not a surprise that those are the same numbers, but they don't match up. That was page 40, 43 of their submission. It doesn't match up with the survey on page 45. That's the one that listed the base plane as, I'm sorry, the basement elevation as 18.55 feet. It's a little blurry in their submission, but that's the same document I put up a moment ago.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Schmidt?
All right. Then let's go to the property owner's representative. I believe we have Andrew Cassidy and Mr. Scranno.
Yes, Andrew Cassidy for the owner. I had, I guess, Mr. Scranno is now here. I had, he informed me that he had to leave for a doctor's appointment. He was there in person this morning. I had written before we convened, reconvened for the public comment period to adjourn to accommodate him. But if he's here and able to speak, I would invite him to do so. Can, are you here? Are you here, Robert?
Hold on. Yes, I'm going to bring him into the room. Yes, Mr. Scranno is here.
Do please unmute and put your camera on, Mr. Scranno.
Robert? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we'd like to see you. Can you put your camera on?
Yeah, I'm trying to do that. Hello?
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Cassidy and Mrs. Scranno, thank you for joining. Mr. Cassidy, please start off your presentation.
Yes, thank you. So for the owner, 99 Sutton LLC, Andrew Cassidy, Cougar Marina, Winnie Arsky in Bittens. We're here addressing the Certificate of Occupancy issued in 2012, which allowed for residential use of the basement units. I think Mr. Scranno can answer most of the pertinent questions, if he's available to do so. Mr. Scranno, are you able to do that?
Yeah, I actually stepped out of the appointment that I was in. I asked them to accommodate this because of the urgent nature. So, yeah, I have a few minutes to answer the questions. Do you want me to just start?
Yes, please start, though. Before you do, I am at this juncture requesting opportunity to submit additional written submission to the BSA after Mr. Scranno and I can speak further about the questions raised. But, Mr. Scranno, thank you for making time for us. I understand you're at the doctor. So if you have a few minutes, please address the Board.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to start off with the fact that I know that the professional certification of applications has become the bane of the existence of the Department of Buildings. But in this case, both the original application and the subsequent application were audited. And as anyone knows who works with the Department of Buildings, an application that gets audited is reviewed through a much stricter and higher standard than an application that is just filed. So, someone mentioned that these applications were not reviewed, and that's completely false, because they were reviewed, they were audited, the audits were accepted. In addition, the plans that were approved and accepted in the audit had inspections from the Department of Buildings. And the Department of Buildings Construction Unit came and saw these units and accepted them. So that's the first thing I want to clarify. Secondly, the fact that the Loaf Board, it was mentioned, does not have jurisdiction about the creation of residential dwelling units in a manufacturing district, was also mentioned, and that's obviously not true either. The Loaf Board's sole discretion is to create residential units in what would otherwise be a nonconforming condition of a manufacturing zone, and that's what, in fact, they did. The first Certificate of Occupancy that was issued for this building on the first round of units that they approved, in fact, changed both the use and occupancy of the entire building, which included all four floors and the basement, to residential use. The fact that the lower level of the residences were duplexes and had recreation spaces does not preclude the fact that the allowable use and occupancy that was permitted by the Loaf Board and then further by the Certificate of Occupancy was for residential use. Next, the fact that the building evaluation that I just listened to for whether or not the lowest level is a basement or a cellar is one way of determining that. And that is through either the legal grades or the grades at the top of the curb. But there is another way to determine whether a lower level and what it is, and that is through the grades adjoining that wall. And in this case, the grades adjoining that wall are in a pit which has lower-level grades that make the lower level a basement. Now, whether or not...
Look, if you... Look, if you have that wall that goes lower than the floor, you're saying that you can use that as the floor elevation?
No.
Not the wall, not the wall, not the wall, the grades in front of the wall.
No, I'm sorry. I think there there's a lot of interesting interpretations being made to the way the zoning resolution is written, and I want to be very clear how the zoning resolution is read by by and large by most of the people. And the one is when we when a grade is determined, a grade is determined by the street level, by the curb level, not by the grade.
I mean, I will say that a building line, which is, I think, what Mr. Scaronno is referencing, as opposed to the curb level, you can use the levels along the building line, which is where the building meets the grade, but I've never personally experienced an areaway or a pit being used as those grades that meet the building line or
It has, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it has been, and I did not invent it. And it has been used to not only develop whether or not the lowest level is a cellar or a basement or whatever, but it's also used to measure the heights of the building and what's allowable for the heights. So basically, if you dig a pit in front of your building, you're measuring the height of the building from that pit. In addition, by the way, could I could I continue for a second?
Okay.
Could I continue? Because I
Yeah.
Thank you. So in in addition, when these industrial and commercial buildings are converted, there is a provision also in the MDL that allows for as little as five feet of legal light and air for those units. So in fact, those areaways were providing what was considered to be the legal light there for the lower portion of the unit, because the minimum that's required for a conversion is five feet. So we believe that when the Loth Board gave the permission to convert the entire building in all of its levels to both residential use and occupancy, that there was permission then to use the lower level as residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask one quick question? You had said that those original 2006 plans were audited by DOB and the audit passed. What year?
Yeah, that's public record. It's on the uh, public record. It's if you look up the job on the DOB website, you'll see clearly a date for the audited thing. I think it was hold on, I took some notes before I stepped out. I think it was in twelve, two thousand and twelve, but there might have been the second job. I I would have to go on the record. We can answer that in a response, written response.
Right, because my next question would be if the audit did pass, and in fact, it did authorize, the plans authorized the apartments in the basement, wouldn't DOB have then modified the 2008 CVO from accessory recreation room to at least show that that we accepted the audit and it really is apartments down there? Why would they leave that inconsistency in place if they audited the plans and said, oh, wow, in fact, there are apartments down here and this needs to be corrected? It just, that doesn't follow for me.
Well, that's why I think the second job was filed to correct that, because the owners had put in another round of requests for additional loft units at this location, which they got accepted for. But somehow, the Loth Board accepted all of the units, but never actually accepted the secondary units that were created in the lower level. Because you got to remember tenants were doing work here and creating a lot of these conditions and not the sponsor or the landlord. So the the landlord was going back to Loth Board to get the creation of splits approved, and they did that, and that's why subsequent alterations were filed. We were trying to keep track of a moving target here.
Okay, I I think there are a lot of things that are being put together and not in a sequence of order. First of all, your letter, clearly, this was the owner's letter, which states that went to file for no work alt one into for to change the certificate of occupancy to forty three units or fifty one units, depending upon which PW one reads. And at that time, DOB requested audited, how did the change of the units come about? And 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 so that it's not like audit, and then you chose the twenty twelve. It was you chose to legalize it, then the audit came about, and then we are in this situation. It was so I just want to make sure the sequence of events is very clear and consistent and 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 it's not being moved around to
Well, well, you're, excuse me, but you're you're not actually making it clear, because that's the latest audit. There were multiple audits before this on the other jobs as well.
But then the
You're only talking about the audit of the most current one, but there was other audits.
Great. Why don't you provide an audit? Why don't you provide a list of all the audits that show that and show that how you were operating and how you're moving in good faith? And show how you relied on DOB and the Loth Board. And and you're gonna have to make a very concise argument, because right now it's not very convincing. Although I do want, I do want to hear your story all out. So if you provide, if you could provide that in a way that the commissioners can review your state of mind, how it was going, what was happening during this period of time.
Vice Chair, we can't hear you.
We we also, we also, by the way, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I was able to speak.
No, no, please, Mr. Scaronno, let Vice Chair Shabata finish his statement, then you can pick up.
Sure.
And Commissioner Shada has his hands up also.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So, Mrs. Scaronno, I'm not sure how much I was heard, but I would like to have a all the documentation that you have of these audits and the timeline of these audits, what you were doing when you requested these audits. And because if my 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 question was about your clean hands, whether or not you're operating with clean hands. And I'd like to, I'd like to see what your argument is with regard to that.
So sure, and and it's not audits that I requested. These are audits that were conducted as part of the normal course of doing business with the Department of Buildings. These audits were made. So these were not audits we requested. These were audits that they they conducted.
I'd also like to see
Yeah, obviously, whatever we can supply with, we will supply.
Right, by DOB and the Loth Board, just to see that you acted appropriately, just so there could be an argument that you acted in support and appropriately.
Mm hmm.
I will work with Mr. Scaronno to prepare a written submission that will lay out the dates and and the relevant events in a way that
Also, sorry, also, I just want to make known that when we did find out that the department was reviewing this scenario, we we were not made aware of this till after the fact that this went to the board. And we have been working with the department over the last month to try to resolve their comments on it. And there is an examiner assigned to the job that we're working with now to resolve this.
So I also wanted to make a statement slash question. While the backstory is important here, it's also important to note that even if everything proceeded as you stated it did, DOB at any time can reverse a prior decision if it has determined that that prior decision was in error. So you could have the cleanest hands in the world, and DOB could be the most mistake ridden, mistake prone agency in the world. But if they finally wake up and and make that determination that, wow, seven years ago, we made a mistake, they have the right to reverse it.
Sure, no one's questioning that. We know, well, we all, we all know that's the the rules that the DOB has. But this this job, in fact, was reviewed by multiple entities. Okay, this is not something that was just, you know, swept through the department without proper review. Yeah, it was professionally certified, but it had an audit, it had an audit, it had inspections. Everything was found to be legally compliant, and in fact, the units were occupied.
I just want to say, I just want to say that while I agree with what Commissioner Hartley Brown says, there does come a point in which the city can act in a way that does constitute a taking. Um, so and and I I'd like to keep that in mind.
That has to be raised in a different
That is a different
That's a good face, face reliance variance case.
This case is for DOB to modify the permit that was granted based on an error that DOB identified now. Now, should 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 the board consider granting it? Then it's for the property owner to file an appeal under good faith. I cannot mix the two together.
I I think, I think we should probably talk about this offline with regard to whether or not we should explore all possible defenses when an application comes up from a city agency.
But this is a court of equity. So this is strictly an interpretive appeal, which is, did DOB take standardized, publicized operational plans and put them into effect in this situation?
Again, I I again, I stress, I think this is best left offline, but I I would like to remind and not remind, it it's important to note that we are, we were created to ensure that improper takings wouldn't occur. And again, I think it's something that we should talk about.
Vice Vice Chair Shabata, I I don't think we are disputing that. The action before us is for modification of a certificate of occupancy, which is under the section that I read out that the DOB has the authority to request. A good faith reliance doesn't fall under that. That's a separate action.
And that's a defense, though.
The defense can make its statement, but that is not the reason for us. That's a separate argument. That's all I'm saying. We can discuss it later on offline, but
Please do.
I don't think this is, the applicant can submit all the documents and but, and I'm going to ask Mr. Cassidy, please, when you do submit all these audits, very clearly indicate the date and the purpose of the audit, what went into reviewing it and how it was, do not just throw papers at us. Right, it's it's going to be lost on us.
I understand.
Carlo, Carlo has his hand up.
Okay, first Commissioner Shada, first Commissioner Shada, then then Kostanza.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I I have a question for Mr. Scaronno. You you indicated that the Board of Lords of the City of New York does have the authority to like permit the non-permitted by the zoning resolution use in the basement, which is residential apartments. I, again, I did read through the website of the city, and it does say, and I'm gonna like quote, that New York City Loth Board regulates the legal conversion. So it actually handles the conversion of buildings from manufacturing users into residential users. That's what it says. When it says legal conversion, I my understanding for this text is legal means in compliance with the law. And the law here is the zoning resolution. According to your statement, you indicated that the the use of residential apartments in the basement was not as of right, meaning that it was not legal. So it's either that building owner obtained a variance from the board that has the authority to change the use, which is us, the BSA, or there is something I do not know, I'm not aware of, that the Board of Lords has somewhere an authority to vary the use from whatever to residential apartments. If and and you just in your testimony, you just confirmed that, yes, they have the authority to do so. Can you please submit that in writing? And refer me to which article in which law indicates such?
Well, that whether or not they did it for the basement, they did it for the upstairs as well. Residential is not permitted in any form, in any form in this building.
Mr. Scaronno, uh, Mr. Scaronno and and Commissioner Shada, I think we get the point. We have to move on. There there is a lot of points that have been stated. Mr. Cassidy, what you need to do is submit a statement of what is Loth Law's legal requirement and what it what is within its purview? And how does you documents and same thing for DOB? What is the connection between DOB and Loth Law in reviewing this and IMD buildings, okay? With regard with regards to residential use, and I want to bring that up, yes, the accessory uses to a residential use does get a use group two listing because it is accessory to a residential use. But an accessory use is not equal to a principal use. And therefore, when a prince accessory use is going to be converted to a principal use, it has to meet the underlying regulations. And in this case, a principal use in the basement would not have been allowed by MDL. So that there that is another part of the zoning regulation. We cannot just blanketly look at, oh, CO says two, and therefore two is equal to residential use, and therefore I can have residential use. No. That's how, that's why the use groups and specific users are very clearly identified to know what is a principal use and what is an accessory use. So I just want to be very clear. It's very simple to read it and say, oh, it's use group two, and therefore, therefore, it's permitted. It's not. That's how I read it.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't agree with that, because two accessory would have had a suffix after the two to give it as an accessory.
Mr. Scaronno, I am going to stop you right there. You may not agree with it, but the entire community who reads the zoning resolution and practices zoning resolution accepts it, and it has been put into practice in that order. So please do not, do not give your interpretation on this matter, because it has been very clearly codified. Okay. Mr. Kostanza.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. I I just wanted to go back. I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought, but just for the clarity again of a question about our authority, I I just again wanted to reiterate what was stated by the board that the purview here is a very specific question on the application brought on by the Department of Buildings. And yes, the board does have the authority to consider good faith reliance, but this is not the form. And that would have to be a completely separate application that has to
Offline. I've asked this offline about four times. I don't want to go into this, and if if I if I'm forced to, I will, I'll argue as to why we have an obligation. I'm trying to be respectful to the board to not make that argument at the moment and to keep that offline. But I'm I'm not going to take many more like challenges otherwise to this statement, because I do have a very strong basis as to why I make it. So again, if we can keep this offline, I would I would much rather, because I think that'd be much more appropriate.
Yes. Yeah, let's keep this offline. We need to discuss it. All right.
Commissioner Shadda, is your hand still up, or is that a mistake?
No, I think that was from previous. Okay, thank you. Mr. Cassidy, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, not at this time, but again, reiterate my request for additional written submission, which I think we all are in agreement on, so.
Okay. Do you have anything to state, Mr. Schmitz? I know your your Ms. Miller, does she want to add anything, state anything?
That's a good question. I don't know how to figure that out right now.
We should move to, just move to the
You can unmute. It starts six.
All right, let's then go to the All right. Let's then go to the public if there is anybody who wants to speak.
Hi, no, I, I am not making any further comment now. We'll, we'll put in writing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Chair, can D O B submit the presentations they made today into the record, please?
I, I didn't.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt indicated he will.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, sorry. The case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-three forty A ninety-nine to eleven, one eleven Sutton Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or a toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute to be able to speak if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to comment.
Um, Mrs. Schmidt, how much time do you think you'll need to submit your next?
Oh, I don't know. Um.
Four weeks? Um, okay.
I would say with all the vacation, everything lined up, um, four weeks gets you to beginning of January.
Yeah.
So January, mid-January.
Yeah.
Be a good submission.
So how much time, uh, Mr. Cassidy, you would need to, do you want to respond? How do you, um, I would, do you want the app, uh, the owner's representative to respond to, um, D O B's?
So I think, um, as a result of this particular hearing, we, there are several things that were stated that also need to be put in the record, right, including your presentation and some of the um, representations that were made by both parties. So if Mr. Schmidt can make his, make that a, a first, um, I'm sorry, a first submission, and then we'll have the property owner reply to that and writing.
Okay.
How much time he needs to reply to that.
And typically to four weeks, four weeks, and then two weeks for a sir reply by the appellant.
Um, I, yeah, actually, it won't come to the hearing. So if four weeks works for you, you can do four weeks.
I, I'm just thinking, um, that beginning of January, I think, would, would be difficult, uh, as you indicated because of the holiday. I think that's six weeks for our initial submission. I think that probably makes sense. It, it puts, happens to put me up against uh, the other submission for like six thirty-eight East Eleventh Street. Um, but I think, I think we can manage them.
Okay, and um, Mr. Cassidy, how much time would you need?
Is this going to be, so it's six weeks for D O B to uh, complete the record based on this, this presentation? And then if I could have six weeks after that to respond, that'd be great.
Okay, six weeks and then a sir reply?
Sure.
And how much time D O B you would need to force a reply?
Uh, I don't know what's customary. Um.
Two weeks is customary.
Two weeks.
And um, could both parties, in addition to clarifying the audit process done by D O B, if we could just uh, give a succinct representation of the occupancy in the building? That would really help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, and um, the timing of the audits and the scope of each audit as well.
Um, this is Felicia Miller. Can I be heard?
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to clarify, um, if this question about the audits is going to be relevant, if you can um, first decide that uh, about the fact that um, unclean hands equity is not the subject of this hearing. I'm not sure exactly what the purpose of what, what's being asked of the department.
Yeah, I, I, I'd just like to state for the record that the board's authority to raise issues suaspekte under Charter Section six 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 sub eight is upon a vote by motion. It has not been uh, made.
I, I don't, you know, again, like I said, I'd like to keep this off record.
Uh, Vice Chairman. Vice Chair, we can't hear you.
And as I said, I'd like to keep the self-record bar, um, but I don't believe um, that when, in that charter section, and I'm gonna have read it in some time, that is the idea of bringing up something suaspekte as if bringing up a case or matter suaspekte, not a defense suaspekte. And I believe pursuant to our obligation to review each case with the utmost and to understand each defense of each case and a part of our um, our obligations, uh, I don't think to ignore uh, what um, has been presented or what questions that have been raised is uh, is something that we could do either. But again, I think after the next uh, uh, the next, on the next hearing, I'm sure we'll be able to have a joint statement uh, by the commissioners as to what we're revealing and what we're not.
Oh, okay. This is an offline discussion. We, right now, what is before us is board, D O B's request for a modification of a permit.
Certificate of occupancy.
Certi- uh, so of a certificate of occupancy, yes. Um, so all the questions that has been raised by the board and clarification that is warranted with regards to um, the questions of directive fourteen, how uh, the plan, uh, and uh, when, when it's a professional certified uh, and directive fourteen, how does that get triggered? All of those questions and, and please go through the hearing because I know a lot of questions were asked. Some are probably same questions asked in different ways. So um, this is what D O B, please look through those and answer all these questions and same thing, uh, Mr. Cassidy and um, um, look through all the questions or comments that have been asked specifically and provide all the documents to back up your argument. Do not just state it. Provide all the documents and direct the um, board clearly how to connect the dots of the documents and the argument that you're making or the argument that D O B is making.
Understood.
Okay.
Who suggested to review both review session and public hearing?
Pardon? What did you say?
Review session and public hearing. We always tell applicants.
Yeah.
And uh, Mr. Cass, if, if there is in the future an inability of one of your um, necessary representatives or witnesses uh, to attend the hearing, please let us know beforehand so we can re-accommodate you. We can't be told right before the public hearing.
No, it, we were told during the public hearing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Please let us know in advance so that we can work around.
If, if you have a planned, if you have a planned appointment, we can work around that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Uh, my apologies.
But I also want to say that we do not want to keep adjourning it. Um, we are going to, the date has, I mean, it's a six six two, so our project manager will get back to you and will set a date. And I think that should give you plenty of time, both of you, to work your schedule and let us know so that we do not have a situation which will result in a last minute adjournment. This should not be prolonged.
Okay. Miss, oh, I was just gonna say something, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? I mean, I thought, um, just for the record, no one called in?
No.
Or raised their hands except for the parties involved?
Okay.
Um, going to the special order calendar?
Uh, yeah, so we are at a one o'clock mark almost. So I want to know, do, do everybody, do you want to have lunch and then come back with the special order and appeals?
Why don't we go till one?
You want to go till one? Okay, all right, fine. We'll go till one.
Okay. Special order ca- I'm sorry, may proceed?
Uh, yes.
Special order calendar, item number sixteen one seventy-five dash ten B Z, volume three. This is thirty-four hundred Baychester Avenue, the Bronx. This should be Andrew Stewart and Elise Foladere.
Yep. Are you sure?
Oh, I mean, it's hot.
This is not helping? Maybe.
Yeah, I was like.
You can go all day.
So we plug it in maybe over here at this power stretch?
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure it's somewhere in our room.
All right, so, thank you. Um, who do we have?
Uh, Liz, Elise Foladere and Mr. Andrew Stewart.
Do we have them in the room?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do, thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Um, Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik P C. I'm here with Mr. Stewart. Thank you so much. Um, he is the engineer of the project. Um, I will go through the questions. So first is the trash bins. There was one trash bin still in the photo, a blue one, but we um, do, uh, I spoke with uh, Ownership Global today and they will do the PVC fence. Um, it should take three to four months depending on weather and then we can put them in the enclosure and take pictures of that.
Can you uh, indicate where that fence would be, where that trash enclosure would be located and why rents is being proposed and why not something uh, that we have been standardizing a masonry wall?
Yep. Three four hundred. I will share the plans just in a minute. Uh, sorry. Share screen. Okay, this is on the photos, so. So we have one right here. Do you see my screen?
Okay.
I see. And I think it, I mean, Andy can speak to why a PVC would be more appropriate if he would like to share, but it probably has to do with being on the lot line.
And what material is being proposed per plan? A PVC fence. Okay. Um, you know, my only suggestion will be since it's an auto repair, just pick a material that is going to withstand the test of time and not going to get damaged and require maintenance. So.
It does show four inch diameter pipe bollards outside of.
Oh, it does.
Which I presume is to address.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, this is Andy from my point. Yeah, we proposed the two pipe bollards kind of outside by the, the gates, still, still have the gates open prevent vehicle impacts. There's also two bollards at the rear of the enclosure. Um, just in case uh, they get a little oversells picking up the, the container within. Um, the PVC enclosure we proposed, I think, because they, I know chain link is not something the board looks at. Uh, I know they've been pushing for uh, uh, masonry enclosures, but considering the site um, that we're just going for a renewal of term here, I think we had discussed this previously and maybe it was our, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was our uh, interpretation, our discussion with the board that the PVC would be acceptable. And the bollards are there for protection purposes.
Um. You know, this is, um, I know we have allowed, we have allowed to come, uh, either a PVC or a masonry. Those are the two. And since this is just an auto repair, there's no uh, uh, convenience store, right?
Correct.
Uh.
It has a small convenience piece of it, but it's a really small sales area, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not on the plans. Actually, I'm on our photos and I only have this.
Right, it's not a, it's not a main, um.
Yeah, it's not like a huge.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, Andy, if I cut you off.
No, that's fine.
Um.
All right.
If that works, um, I spoke with them. I know we talk about timing later. It'd probably take three to four months depending on weather to put that in. Um, next, you discussed graffiti. Um, we can, on the other side of the building, um, towards Tillitson, is that how you pronounce it? I too, I'm not sure. Um, we can take a picture of that to show that there's no graffiti there in our next submission. And then.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that was. And then I, um, I looked at the previously approved plans. Um, I have them here with, in uh, regards to the uh, air station and the signage at the corner. Um, this plan was done based off of a survey and um, Andy, if you just want to talk for a second about allowable projections off the site with site, in terms of signage?
Yeah, so like Elise said, this, our plan was based off of a, off of a survey. So what's uh, shown with the freestanding sign there is, is current condition for that plan. Um, from what we have there, it's uh, we should, you know, this, it is close to the property line, so there is a bit of projection, but it's a what we have uh, measured, it's a fifteen inch projection where it's allowed eighteen inches for a double face sign to project over a property line.
Uh, yes, Mr. Stewart, you're right. You're allowed to have a projection. My question wasn't more of the projection, it was the base. Um, are, are you allowed to have the base outside the property line, the base of the sign? The, um, from the survey, uh, from the site plans provided, it seems like the pedestal on which the air pump and the vacuum and the, and the signage is located, it seems to be straddling the property line and the, and the city sidewalk. I, I understand the signage uh, exceeding. I think you're allowed up to fifteen or eighteen inches.
Um, yeah, so I have to go back, I honestly have to go back and check D O B records if it's, you know, was permitted and allowed to be installed in that fashion. I don't see an issue with it, um, as long as the board is good with the two, but I'd have to confirm with that with D O B records to be honest.
And Mr. Kostanza's hand is up?
Yeah.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, no, I, again, I'm sorry, I, I missed a little bit of the conversation. I apologize if this was already addressed, but I just wanted to direct the board that um, there is an exception for projections of accessory signs for automotive service stations, but it's only pursuant to a special permit subject to seventy-three two.
Hello? Uh, Mr. Kostanza, we can't.
I can hear you.
I can hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
I can hear you calling.
It sounds like I can't be heard in the hearing room. Oh, everyone, I apologize. Uh, there's a technical difficulty. Can, can everyone just pause for a second? I apologize to the applicant. Um, just give me.
At least can you stop screen sharing?
The podium mic's still on?
Yes, just one second.
Sorry, um, can everybody?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
We can hear.
Yes, you're co- every, you're coming in clear now.
We can hear you.
I, um, I'm not sure what, when it's paused. We may have to just back up a little bit and kind of start over again.
I think, uh, no, no, we were able to hear Mr. Stewart. After that, when you started, Mr. Kostanza, eh, everything froze.
Okay.
You were talking about.
Let me go back to my desk. Just give me one second and then I'll, I'll reiterate what I was trying to say.
Do we know how the, the recording and or the YouTube are faring?
Let me look.
They're still going.
The applicants haven't been, you know, noting to us that there's been a problem. Usually they will call in.
Ms. Folada, you were able to hear us still, Mr. Stewart?
Yeah.
And I.
It's, it's just.
She was actually able to hear Carlo too.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm back. I'm sorry, everyone. Um, so I just wanted to go back to what I was stating, uh, and I apologize. I had missed a little bit of the discussion. Um, there, there is an exception for projections of accessory signs with relationship to automotive service stations, but um, I just want to direct the board to look at seventy-three two twelve. It's via a special permit. Um, only available in C two, C four, C six and C eight districts. But again, I apologize that I, I might have missed a little bit of, of the presentation, so um, if, if there's another as a right um, scenario, I, I'm not familiar with it, but I just did want to alert the board to that section zone.
Okay.
And I can share the previously approved plan. And I can share the previously approved plans if you need to see it. There, though, all those items are on the the lot line.
Okay. Alright, so if you could just provide a clarification, uh, in your next submission about that, just for the record.
Okay, um, just FYI, Mr. Dale emailed and said there was no gap in YouTube. So he's confirming.
No gap.
There was no gap in the YouTube.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Okay, cool. So I think those were all the items that you're discussed.
Um, any other questions or comments? Let's go to the public then.
Okay, just let me get the timer on, okay? So the case we're currently discussing is se, sorry, one seventy-five dash ten B Z volume three thirty-four hundred Baychester Avenue, the Bronx. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, which is toll-free. At the prompt, you will enter a webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute, uh, to be on the phone, to be able to be heard. And if you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Okay. Um.
Fifty, forty seconds.
How long will it take for, um, you to, uh, provide a submission?
So if you'd like to see the trash enclosure, then three to four months depending on weather.
Okay. Alright. And, um, okay. I'm, I think by and large, most of the issues the board had were being responded, have been responded to, and I think from the review session, no one had any comments. So I, my recommendation would be to close it, but to keep the record open for the applicant to make those, uh, changes. One is the trash enclosure, the photos of the graffiti on Tillitson being removed and just a narrative about the signage. Um, and, uh, then we will schedule it after, you said, four to five months?
I said three to four, but it really depends on what the, how, you know, cold it gets.
So we can, uh, I would say best would be to work with, uh, uh, our project manager and we'll schedule a time for, uh, uh, decision.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
You keep going?
Yeah. Oh, make a motion to close.
Oh, make a motion to close. Okay, that's, I was just. Okay, uh, Chair Shonda, the motion to close, Chair Shonda. Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay. Next, I'm sorry. Next item is seventy, seven thirteen twenty-eight B Z four twenty-five Vanderbilt Avenue, Staten Island.
I think this would be Nasir Kanzada.
And Mr. Gupta, uh, I don't. Mr. Gupta, yeah.
Yeah, I've already.
Hmm, over here. Are they in?
I, I did let him in. Oh, what happened?
I don't see his hand up, but okay.
Hmm. I did let him in, but, um.
They have an.
Mr. Kanzada?
There.
Mr. Gupta? Okay.
Is he in?
No, it says they declined to be promoted as a, there we go, there we go.
I, I re-promoted him.
Hello?
Yeah, if you could put your video on, we can hear you.
Yes, let me turn on my camera.
Camera, sorry. Okay, are you the only one today, Mr. Kanzada?
That's me, yes.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments in front of review session.
Good, I'm Nasir J Kanzada. I'm the applicant on the job. And sorry, the marker is not entering.
Uh, were you able to listen to the comments that the board had raised during the review session?
Yes, so there were three comments. One of the comment was the bollard details. I put in on the drawing and it's a typical detail. So we have no problem with that. And the second comment was around the D E P. Uh, Commissioner Sheta mentioned that, uh, if we do the stormwater management for the canopy, we should do driver. So we will get the D E P approval for the driver. It will file as a site connection proposal and we get the approval. And there was third thing about the vehicular, uh, uh, arrangement. So I did notice at the corner, acute corner, there is some, uh, uh, one or two vehicle have a sharp corner. So we will rearrange those to make sense. Actually, we went further into it. We saw that more vehicular, uh, there on Vanderbilt Avenue is the morning traffic and the other street is afternoon traffic. So we have compensated both the traffic because morning is heavy loaded Vanderbilt and afternoon because it looks like people go east and west. So we will accommodate both, especially the corner has this issue, otherwise the rest of things are okay.
Okay, so the morning traffic is heavy on Vanderbilt?
That is correct, yeah.
And afternoon on there. So that's why having that sharp turn would not be that much of an issue.
Yes, so because, uh, if you're going on, uh, westbound on, uh, uh, V- Vanderbilt, people can al, they can always change their direction to the Targi Street and make it easier for them. So it's like, could be one time, but nobody will make a sharp left turn or sharp right. So because it's acute, acute angle and the traffic is moving different direction in the morning when it afternoon.
Okay, yeah, uh, the reason I think I raised that question is because, uh, Targi is one way and all your traffic movements, maneuverability movements is mostly shown from Vanderbilt and not from Targi. So that I just assumed therefore Vanderbilt is the primary. Um.
So Vanderbilt is primary only in the morning till twelve o'clock. After twelve o'clock, everything is mostly on Targi. Nobody comes on Vanderbilt. So I am assuming there will be traffic morning and evening. So I had to accommodate both the street. I cannot just say one. So that's why, but the first car which is at the, at the acute angle, I, I had to just to adjust that one.
Okay, so you will adjust that?
Yes. And rest, rest, uh, you know, I'm, I'm okay with the board.
Okay, great. Um, if you need a sample of the bollard, I don't know if that has been provided by the project manager. We can, we send that to you, but I, I just, you know, uh, I, I have seen different versions of bollards being played. Some are just empty bollards that are bolted. I don't think they last very long over time. They kind of wear off. I think the ones that we had looked, uh, we have seen, uh, in few cases is they're kind of, uh, drilled into the ground. There, uh, there's a, um, so that makes it most structurally sound and stable. And your, uh, uh, client will not have to worry about having to replace them on a regular basis.
In our general practice, we, we have the, the twelve inch hole, four inch diameter, twelve inch hole. We put the steel pipe, four inch diameter. We fill solid with concrete. And there is a yellow casing comes on top of it and that covers it. So it's looks like a plastic thing, but inside is a concrete filled con, uh, four inch pipe. So that's what we're doing typically. So that's the detail I'm showing on the drawing. I only showed it, but I can't upload now.
Okay, alright. Alright, any other questions or comments for Mr. Kanzada? Okay, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is seven thirteen twenty-eight B Z four twenty-five Vanderbilt Avenue, Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or a toll-free number which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight and the pound sign. At the prompt, after that, you will press the pound sign only. Once you are permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Um, how long will it take for you to make these corrections, Mr. Kanzada?
We already did that. It's so simple. So we already did it. Actually, it's just upload the drawings.
Chief Daley has his hand up? Deputy Chief Daley has his hand up?
Okay, yes, Daley?
Minimum time, it will be whatever is easy for.
Someone let Mr. Daley in, Chief Daley in, Deputy Chief Daley in?
Mr. Dale, uh, Chief Daley's been promoted to panelists.
Can you hear the timer when I did it before, Vice, Madam Chair? Still by the microphone? Oh, you got, okay.
You just have to blow a whistle when it comes.
Yeah, well, I'll keep it by the camera. So this way it's whatever.
Okay, uh, alright, I'm here. Uh, I, I, Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out to you and to the board and the applicant. Note in section, uh, three one twelve with the fire code, it does talk about veh, vehicular impact protection to bollards. So it should follow that, uh, section of the fire code when you design, uh, your bollards. Thank you.
Yeah. We'll accommodate that definitely, Chief.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and is that something that needs to be done for all bollards? So, or is, is there specifics areas where it was mandated?
But it, it's, uh, recommended in the rule. Anytime you're gonna put in a bollard to, to use that, uh, section of the fire code description, uh, so we, we're consistent.
Mention that section again?
I'm sorry, yes, it's, uh, it is from the two thousand twenty-two fire code, section three one two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to know. Thank you. Uh, okay, so if everybody's okay.
No one has called in, so.
And, um, the note to the plan, um, I know, uh, we will send you the note that specifically Commissioner Sheta was referring to, and you can add that to the, uh, to your plan note. How long will it take typically for D E P to approve? I'm just curious.
Oh, that will be a long time because I had to, I had to mention that, uh, existing drivers are there and they are enough and no need to do it, or I had to investigate that new drivers are needed. So I had to put those in. So it could be two to three months. But, uh, I would do this after because after board approval, then I will mention and D E P, but, uh, there will be no driver most probably because everything was paved for years on this ground. And putting the canopy is, is the same thing, uh, same impervious space. So, but we will still put it in with D E P. Let's see. So that's why D E P might take time. So we could do after approval of the board.
Sure. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we close.
Excellent. Should I go?
Uh, yeah, oh, the only thing is that the record will be kept open for Mr. Kanzada to submit the revised set of plans, uh, and, uh, with regards to the maneuverability, um, and the bollards, but do submit the complete set of plans.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion to close, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get back to you, Mr. Kanzada, with a date.
Thank you, appreciate it, boy.
Yeah, thank you.
Have your wish.
Thank you. Okay, um, seven ninety-nine eighty-nine B Z volume three fourteen seventy Bruckner Boulevard, the Bronx. This is Miss Rose.
The.
Yeah. Bonnie Rose.
Bonnie Rose and Jay Goldstein.
I don't know. I didn't see Jay in the room, but, uh, maybe he's in.
Say, do we have Bonnie? Yep, I'm gonna promote her to yeah, she has been promoted, yeah, forgotten. Okay.
Please turn your camera. Thank you, Miss Rose.
Sorry, it took a minute.
That's okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing to, in the, nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do, thank you.
Please state your name for the record and respond to the board's comments at review session.
Good afternoon, everyone. Bonnie Rose with the Law Office of Jay Goldstein here today on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we heard this morning's review session and we understand that the board is satisfied with the application. Uh, we want to thank them for their review and their time on this case.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your, um, very thorough submission. Great. Um, any questions or comments? If not, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is seven ninety-nine eighty-nine B Z volume three fourteen seventy Bruckner Boulevard, the Bronx. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or a toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight and press the pound sign. At the prompt, after that, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
We're just waiting for the clock to run out, um, one minute, so.
You guys want to continue or?
I'm either way.
Yeah, me too. Okay, I need to take a five-minute break. I need to get walking.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's, yeah, it's one.
Last one, lunch break? Okay, lunch break. One twelve. Oops. Anybody hear that? No?
Nope.
No.
Gosh.
I think there's an audio suppress feature for loud sounds, like sudden loud sounds. So maybe if it's quieter and further away from the mic, it might pick it up. I don't know. But Zoom tries to prevent like super loud sounds from, anyway, there's an audio suppression thing.
Wow. Impressive. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to close and we'll schedule this for decision in January eighth, the first January hearing.
Okay, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta? Vice Chair Shabeta? Thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so what are we doing?
We're taking a lunch break. It's, uh, close to one fifteen. So let's take a lunch break for, uh, thirty minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thirty minutes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good one.
Back at one four. One four. One four forty-five?
One forty-five.
One forty-five PM, we will return. Thank you. Oops, sorry, Mr. Actually, he's probably waiting.
If you say so.
Okay, everyone, we're about to begin. Ms. Matthias, we are live and streaming. You may proceed.
Okay, we're back on the record, ladies and gentlemen. This is the border standards and appeals public hearing for December 11th, 2023. I'll wait till the chair is ready.
Yeah.
Let me know when you're ready.
Yep, yep.
Good. Okay, new cases, item number 198408BZ, volume 26720 Main Street Queens. This is Mr. Dash, Daniel Ash.
Who?
Daniel Ash.
Daniel Ash.
Hmm, I think he's probably already in the room.
He is.
Yes, he is.
There we go. Hi, good afternoon. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to seat of board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and we proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
My name is Daniel Ash. I'm working with Walter Gorman, engineering, the applicant of record. I listened to the board's comments before. Thank you very much. Madam Chairman had a question about the signage. I did see it on the drawing. The canopy sign was included there as a non-illuminated sign, so that those pike mounds did include the canopy signage as well. And if you want me to show you that on the drawing or?
Yeah, can you? I don't know how I missed it. So if you can just.
It's okay. I think I just need to share. You can see my screen now?
Yes, sir.
That is the mobile sign on canopy.
Ah. Yes, yes. Okay, and that is included, and that comes to 104, which is less than 150. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine then.
I heard you also, Madam Chair, comment about the banners. I went back to the photos. I'm guessing you're referring to this as the banner?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry. That will take off those those banners and get updated photos.
Mm-hmm.
Then um let's get my notes back.
Commissioner Sheta had a question regarding vans, trucks on the sidewalk.
Yes, so there were no vans anywhere on the photos. I believe Commissioner Sheta saw that from the Google images, which I went back to. There was only a couple for this site from 2022. And it looked like it was just showing a car maybe awaiting service.
I think the bottom line is whether it's one car or multiple cars or vans. Especially something awaiting service is not something that can, that should happen on the sidewalk, on city sidewalk.
This is the Google image that I have open now. This is the most recent one.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe this was a delivery truck, it looked like, that was coming on site.
Right.
I didn't see anything else parked. This is a car that was waiting service.
Right.
And then if you went to the it went back even to 2017.
Right, these are all, yeah, so I think for me, I do remember seeing this and for me it didn't look like the same vehicle that is parked there all throughout, which is sometimes we do see that and we flag it. But in this instance, I remember looking at these photos and all the all the vehicles that were parked there other than cars were different types. So it seemed like they were, it was a one-time thing, the awaiting service situation, so I didn't flag it for that reason.
I mean, the only thing I had noticed in the submitted photos were these two blue vans in the submitted photos. And I think that's what I assumed Commissioner Sheta was referring to, but they don't appear to be in any of the later submissions. I'll just.
I didn't actually talk about the vans in the photos. I spoke about the ones in the Google images and I didn't say that they were like permanently there. I said, I saw them in the Google images. I'm not sure if they were related to the site. Related means whether they park there regularly or maybe they were subject to service. But I did add that when I like went to the site, I didn't like observe same trucks there. So it was just a red flag. I didn't want to say that you have vans permanently parked in there.
Okay, so it seems it's like a one-off. It's not a regular occurrence.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you for that.
The last comment that I heard from the review session was pertaining to the fact in 1948 and the resolution. was pertaining to the fact in nineteen forty-eight in the resolution, it referenced a masonry fence. But then in the most recent approved drawings and in the current conditions, it's a wooden fence. Was that something the board had concerns with?
Um. I don't know, Commissioner Yun, you had it. I don't have a concern.
Yeah, I was saying I didn't have any opposition to it. I just thought we should either clean up the prior compliance so it doesn't come back to haunt the property, or somehow make it clear that the wood fence is accepted, if that is the case.
I think it's hard when you started.
Um, yeah, a park or a cemetery.
Yeah, it's a cemetery, so it makes it pretty clear in that nineteen forty-eight resolution that that cemetery wall needs to be made out of masonry, so just saying, if we want to accept the fence, then as a wood fence.
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I think over the years, it has been a wood fence, and it's a cemetery. I, um, I, I think I, I'm okay with it. I really do not have an issue, and so far neighbors or the communities have not raised any concerns, and the fence seems to be in good condition. Um. So I, I'm okay with that. So if you can make that correction to the plan to indicate the material change.
It is actually on the plan.
It is on.
Yeah, yeah, it was just in the resolution as a condition.
Okay. So that resolution should not be carried forth. Understood.
I believe they were all the comments for this from the review session.
Yeah, any questions or comments? If not, we can go to the public. Okay, let's go to the public. Um, hi, I can't. Screen sharing? Yeah, thank you. Daniel, can you, Mr. Ash, can you stop screen sharing? Thank you, sorry, I need to. So the case we are currently discussing is eighty-four oh eight BZ, volume two sixty-seven twenty Main Street Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, or eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, which is our toll-free number. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight, and press the pound sign. At the prompt after that, you will press the pound sign only. When you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you're calling in on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Um, Mr. Ash, how long will it take for you to make these minor corrections?
The correction is to take new photos with the banners gone. I would say probably three weeks.
Okay. Time is up? Okay, all right. I then make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Hi.
Vice Chair Shabetta? Vice Chair Shabetta, you're muted, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is eighty-four, eighty-five ninety-nine BZ, eleven oh six Metcalf Avenue, the Bronx. Please raise your right hand again. Mr. Ash? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and respond to the board's comments at review session.
Daniel Ash from Walter Gorman's office, the applicant of record. I listened to the review session for this site as well. Um, Madam Chairman brought up a good catch that the statement of facts had a, a typo from the zoning chart area that, where it was copying, it only took one room of the, of the building and not the whole amount, so we will fix that. There was some discussion about a car wash on site, as well as the community board, um, concerns. I would like to address both of those. The car wash you saw was something that was there in two thousand twenty-two that is no longer on site as, um, we did see from the photos, the most recent photos. That once we noticed the dealer had that put in, we made them remove it and inform them that was not allowed. The dealer also, unbeknownst to us, had some sort of recycling program going on once a week that the community board was aware of and brought that to our attention, which we then found out was going on that has now been stopped. The dealer was notified that they can't do that, and the community board was satisfied. That's why they issued their approval with that condition. And that explains why, um, Commissioner Artley Brown saw storage along the Metcalf Avenue side. That was these recycling bottles that people were dropping off. But that is not happening anymore.
Okay. So we're going to put these as conditions, that there shall be no uses other than that's reflected on the plan, including car wash or, um, any, um, other programs related to recycling, or, I mean, I, I don't know, with some general thing, because I don't want to limit to justice. So the council just write a language that ensures that no additional use other than what is specifically shown on the plan be permitted.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. And, and I appreciate, Mr. Ash, that you did notify your client immediately, once you were informed of the nature of use, and I do appreciate your client's willingness to correct it, but please remind him that he cannot keep doing it. We had it on short leash for this very reason. And if he continues to do this, we may have to bring it back into compliance, and that's not something either you or your client wants.
Correct, thank you. Madam Chair, you also mentioned something about the planting on the corner, about it being trimmed?
Yeah, I, I think it was one of the photos you had submitted, or maybe it was a Google view. Um, the tree looked overgrown, and it was spilling onto the sidewalk, and since that's a pretty busy intersection um, with a lot of pedestrian along that roadway, um, my suggestion was to trim it, but I'm, I'm sure it's winter time, so I, and that, that was that edge must have been already trimmed.
We can get updated photos, uh, if that's needed. Um, Commissioner Yun also correctly pointed out that there was a decimal place, uh, wrong on the signage chart, so we'll fix that in the statement of facts. And.
Um, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, go ahead, I was gonna.
Um, so with regards to the violation, I mean, it seems there was a violation because of the car wash. Um, and, um, has that been, is that the only violation that was issued?
There are two DOB ECB violations. Both of them require a new CVO in order to clear. That will be the result of completing the, um, extension of term. And then getting a new CVO will allow us to clear those two violations. There were no other violations.
I see, okay. All right, any other questions, Colin?
Commissioner Sheta had a question, which was a good one, about the, the lumen spread.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Because I went back, uh, hold on, I'll share my screen again, from our fieldwork. We had, I, the person who did the CAD transcribing must not have taken us, you can see from our fieldwork that there were, there were slight readings above zero around the light area. I don't know why in the drawing, when it got copied over, that someone just took zero. We have told the client now that, uh, to get these even lower, which they're not very high to begin with, but to get it even lower than this, we could put shields on the, the two light poles.
Yeah, they are high, um, but are they, they are right at the lot line?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, the, the, you need to put shields to bring it down.
I, I believe considering the proximity of the light pool to the residential lot line, you're gonna need at least uh, side shields from the neighbor's, uh, side. I mean, you don't have, you don't have to shield the entire light all around, but at the neighbor's side, you need to put some probably considerable size shields to make sure that the light is not gonna shed next door.
Yes, I've informed them since the review session this morning, so we'll, we will do that and then take updated readings.
Thank you.
There's no way to kind of change the orientation of the, where the light is cast, rather than it being
It already is facing away from the residential side.
Yes, okay.
And there are a lot of trees over there, so I don't think it was ever a concern to the residents, but.
I thought the way it's shown on the drawings, it indicate, let me take a look before I give me one second.
One of the two.
Yeah, I believe the way it's shown, it's, it's given the impression that it's, uh, like, not facing its parallel, uh, to the residential lot line.
Uh, yes, you're right, there were two lights. One is parallel, one is perpendicular.
Right here, that one. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that one because it's very close. Uh, so this one is parallel. If this is the case, you need to put some shields down to make sure that when the light starts to shed that way, it's gonna be blocked.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I already reached out to the, the client, and they're getting a contractor to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is eighty-five ninety-nine BZ, eleven oh six Metcalf Avenue, the Bronx. Should you wish to discuss? Dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight, and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Okay, how much, um, how much of a time would you need, um, to revise? Um, to address the, um, lumen spread?
Because the holidays, I, I don't see them getting it done before the end of the year, so I would probably say eight weeks.
Eight weeks, okay. So the plan will be to install, uh, shields and then take a measurement?
Correct.
And I, I hear you said you're gonna be taking readings. If your engineer can do analytical model and save you the time and the trip, I would be okay with that.
Thank you. It might be easier to just take the readings, so we can make sure.
That it's up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ash, when you submit, um, the updated images, could you please make sure that the top of the shield or the light is visible? I think they were cut off in the last submission.
Yeah, a good point.
Time is expired. No call-in.
All right, um. Uh, are commissioners okay with wanting to close it and keep the record open, Commissioner Sheta? I know a lot of, um. Can't hear you.
You're muted, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I said I believe it's my inner comment. Yes, we got, I'm okay with closing.
Okay, all right, so let's close it.
So for motion to close, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This would be Elise.
Appeals, new cases, appeals calendar, twenty nineteen thirteen A, volume two twenty-nine, Ryerson Street, Brooklyn.
I've already moved, um. Yeah. Hi, how are you?
Good morning, Miss, good afternoon, Miss Foladere. Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments. This is an appeals case, and you are not required to be sworn in.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palanick PC. I believe your only question was about violations. Um, the client, um, put in to waive potentially the violations, but the, the DOB disagreed. They, so they intend on paying in full. That just happened like last week, and they intend on paying, um, in the near future. So they were for facade violations, and they are going to pay.
Okay, these are facade violation?
Yeah, for the facade of the building.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments? Let's go to the public then.
Thank you, Jella. The case we are currently discussing is twenty nineteen thirteen A, twenty-nine Ryerson Street, Brooklyn. If you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, or our toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight, and the pound sign. At the prompt after that, you will press the pound sign only. Press star nine at the next, sorry, once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone, and if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Um, Ms. Foladere, um, when, um, I, I'm going to make a motion to close it, but I do want to, want, I would like you to submit, um, the penalty that's been paid for the, towards the violation.
Okay, understood.
So you want a receipt of the paid penalties?
Yeah, just provide a proof of the payment.
Okay.
Did the clock run out?
Almost.
Twenty seconds. Why you guys still can't hear?
I know.
I heard that.
You did?
I just heard that.
Really? It's very quiet.
Mm-hmm.
So like, mm.
No, it sounded like a microwave.
Okay, all right, I want to make a motion to close.
Make sure there's, yeah, there's no call-ins. Uh, Chair, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no one else in the waiting room.
No, there's no one.
So what are we doing? This is a case.
Mister Patel should be in the waiting room. He was there before. He was there before.
Holidays.
Me too.
Uh, I don't see Mister Patel at all.
Let me see if I can get him or Jaleen. You're the one.
Mail. Yeah, both are Mister Patel's.
Yeah, both are his. Why is it I'm not working up his? He was there. I don't understand what happened. All right, let me call him. I'll unmute, sorry. Says his mailbox is full. Oh my gosh. All right, let me try and send him an email.
We just took a break.
Were you able to reach him? Um, cause I can't. Was he at the review session? Did he attend the review? Believe he was. Let me try one more time to call him.
Tony, um, he's getting ready to join, to rejoin.
Is he going to, he's joining in?
Um, yeah, he's trying to reconnect now.
Cause I'm calling him and I'm interrupting him to join in, is that it? Sorry.
I, I made contact a second ago.
Okay, yeah, cause I was calling at the same time. Okay. Thank you, Jaleen.
Thank you. Okay, there, I see him. I've moved him to the panelist.
Why isn't he sitting? Again, that heat, it feels like it's surging in here.
Okay, I, I, okay, there, I think Mister Patel is in.
Is it too hot in the room, Commissioner? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Is it too hot in the office at all?
No.
Not back there.
No, it's the review session.
Oh, okay, we almost done, thank God. Let's have the engineer come up.
All right, I think Mister Patel is in our panel.
Mister, uh, Mister Patel, can you unmute? Join, join and please unmute and put your video on, please.
Um, uh, Ms. Matias, could you please call the case? I don't think we called.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I not call it? Hello? All right, the first one, sorry, thank you, counsel. Twenty twenty-three fourteen A seventeen oh seven Richmond Terrace Staten Island.
Mister Patel? I don't see him.
He's there, but he's, I don't know. Um, can someone let him in or put the screen up? Maybe he can call in.
He has been.
Put him in, so I don't understand.
Uh, Mister Patel, please turn your video on.
And unmute?
And unmute? To respond to the comments that were raised by the board? Mister Patel?
Wait, I think he's coming.
I lost him.
Oh, there he is.
Where is he?
You need to, you need to unmute, sir. Where is he?
Just saw him.
Yeah, unmute. We can't hear you.
Yep. Okay, Mister Patel, um, please unmute. We cannot hear you, sir.
I can't hear you.
Uh, Mister Patel, you have to unmute? We can't hear you.
Concerns me that applicants know they have a hearing day and for some reason.
So we cannot hear you.
Fantastic.
Yep. Can we, uh, can you give him the phone number to call in?
Should be heard now, they're unmuted.
Oh, oh, Mister Patel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I just called twenty twenty-three fourteen A seventeen oh seven Richmond Terrace. Did you hear the board's comments at review session?
Yeah, at the review session, I was present, yes.
Now, okay, so could you please address those comments to the board members? Respond to those comments?
Yes, uh, we have uh concerns from the F D N Y regarding the access to the uh, the site. And uh, sometimes on the off downtime, they have parked cars all over, so that we had uh provided a parking that clearly defines the parking spaces. That way we have a clear access to the building, the F D N Y. So I think that was the uh final, you know, the, the last uh plan I sent over to show the parking, yeah.
So, um. Two, three, fourteen, I just need to pull up the plan. Two, three, two, three.
It was sent, yes, uh, I think last night, was it Sunday, right?
Yeah, it was sent last night.
You sent me Sunday. I sent it last night out.
Yes.
Um, so my question is, uh, and I'm, I'm, unfortunately, I'm not able to pull up the drawings. I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm not able to. Um, it shows the floor, uh, the the space with parking laid out.
Yeah, it shows, uh, we're proposing sixteen, altogether sixteen parking spaces and then uh uh that leaves a twenty feet clear path for the F D N Y uh to access and there's a, there's a fire hydrant right outside the gate on the opposite sidewalk. We have a fire hydrant.
Okay. Is that in the plan?
No, that's a separate photograph.
The plans. I just put the plans on the screen.
Okay, uh, now there's a photograph I shown of, uh, you know, the, of the hydrant that is right next to the the gate of the entrance of the lot, uh, if you can see, bring up that photograph.
Yeah, I did see. Um, so I, I know Chief Daly is also here, uh. Want to make sure if Chief Daly, if he, if he has had the chance to review this plan and does it respond to the questions that uh Fire Department had raised? Chief Daly?
I don't see him in the room.
Yeah, he's there. I see.
Oh, he came in. I'm sorry, I have it closed, sorry.
Hi, Madam, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair. I, I did see the plans. I, he does. And I saw that he submitted a photograph of a hydrant across the street. But he only on the plane, on the photographs, he shows that the distance from the hydrant through the curb is fifty feet. But I also need, it has to be shown on the plan and I also need the distance from the hydrant to the building. In addition, the five, the Bureau of Fire Prevention was at the site on October thirtieth and we were denied access to the building. Um, so I would like, uh, Mister Patel to inform his client that the Fire Department is, will be returning back to the building uh to verify the insulation of the um the spray booth system. You also know there is an outstanding violation order on this property in that and it was attached to my uh comments. Spare me a second, please.
Yeah, which I did send to Mister Patel.
You did. And then, of course, you know, the, the letter, you, you had submitted a, to the, to the B S A an approval letter dated August eighth, twenty eighteen. But you referenced another type of our spray booth system that's completely different. So now I have information on two different spray booth systems and we need to verify what's going on. Also need to verify if the booths are sprinkled, if it's properly vented. Uh, what else? Uh, does it have proper fire extinguishing systems? And also we, we need them uh approval from the document from, from the building for the fire extinguishing system as listed on the violation order E four one nine eight eight nine. This has been outstanding since um two thousand eighteen. So we still have a way to go before, uh, I could uh issue my letter of no objection on this. So like I said, Mister Patel, I'll contact you later this week and you can inform the owner uh when the Fire Department will be at the site again. It'll probably be sometime next week.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, and the other part of the question, uh, Mister Patel, we had was a prior, um, yeah, um regarding um the prior use, like there's a finding related to G C L thirty-six and, and that is a finding related to hardship. And Ms. Matias can help you with uh some sample language. Basically, in this case, what you have to justify is why you need this, why this waiver is critical. And in your situation, you have an existing use that has been in operation. And uh, and uh that, uh, and there are other uses that, that are also fronting along the street frontage. Um, so I think there are language, a similar language sample uh that Ms. Matias can provide you with. You need to put that into your narrative. Um, another question I, we had, we just needed a little bit of clarity, not that it affects your project, just in terms of whether the project is in a flood zone or not. It seems it's partially in it. Um, so if you can um clarify that and if it is, um, ju, just state that in your uh statement. And with regards to the prior uh Fire Department approval for the spray booth, uh, we need a, some kind of a con, confirmation that it is, um, that all the prior Fire Department uh conditions are.
Uh, yes, uh, we have a fire suppression system, uh, as part of the booth, you know, they have a fire suppression and dry cam system. And uh, so the F D N Y will have to, will obviously look at those uh suppression system as when they do the inspection. And uh, we have everything for that.
Right, so the, so you have a separate thing going on with Fire Department, but Fire Department needs to get everything verified. All we need just for our record is that, and I think Fire Department, once it, once uh they do conduct the fire inspection, we would probably have our answer, which is, are you complying with all prior Fire Department regulations? That's really what we are looking for. And maybe that's the inspection that the Fire Department wants would address our comments. Um, so I think it's in your best interest for your property, for your client to provide access.
Okay.
And um I think tho, those were our comments. Are there any other questions or comments that I missed for Mister Patel?
Uh, Mister Patel, do you have any update on the Community Board and its recommendation?
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I have received emails, uh, that was made between the B S A and the Community Board. And uh, I believe they are going to review it, review this, uh. So I had to follow up with the B S A, uh, what I have to do for that uh for the Community Board. Do I have to present something with them or is it?
Yeah, the Community Board said they probably would put it on their January agenda, but we're not quite sure if it would be the earlier part of the week or the latter part of the week, but they said they would uh notify us and you.
Okay, okay.
Chair?
Miss Banky's hands is up? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
You go ahead, Tracy.
Tracy, Miss Banky.
Sorry, um, yeah, I just wanna say we still need a revised type-two checklist indicating that this is a type-two only.
Right, I did send him that request again.
Thanks.
And my point, just in case if, if the site is, is partially in a flood zone, and I believe it is, I just located the site on the F I V A map. Uh, I, I would suggest that the applicant add a note that B S A is not waiving any uh flood-related uh regulations.
Of course, yeah, we will do uh whatever we need to do, like floodproofing with the, with the flood vents and other safeguards, you know, for flood.
No, but Commissioner, do you want a, a note on the plan? Is that what?
Yes, the standard, the standard language, yes. I, I, I would say the P M send the language to the applicant, the applicant add him to the plans.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
The only other thing, um, I don't know if there's an existing B P P or if the plan is to just update the site plan with the required uh dimensions per F D N Y, but uh I suppose we don't need a B P P if there isn't one.
Well, the question I did, this is a C C O street, I think.
Yeah, that was the other part is, how you're gonna get a street status confirmation from the Borough President's Office.
I believe we have sent uh to the o, office for street status and we got a response, but we, uh, I guess they'll send it straight to the B S A. They haven't sent it to me.
I haven't seen it. I'll reach out to the Borough President's Office then.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to, to Brock. Yeah.
Um. Yeah, uh. Okay. So with regards to the plan that Fire Department wanted, you need to indicate it in the plan, the distance from the hydrant from uh to the building. And to, so indicate that on the plan. I think a photo is helpful, but we need it on the plan.
Yes, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mister Patel? Let's go to the public.
May I give you the secret to how to make? Okay. Jala, okay. So the case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-three fourteen A seventeen oh seven Richmond Terrace Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. Uh, you will receive a prompt, enter when, enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press, press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. And if in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Hmm? Huh? One minute. Um, I Mr. Patel, how long will it take for you to make these corrections?
Uh, will I get something written from B S A, or uh, when you, uh, so I'll just start with submitting these changes, right?
Right, we'll, we'll schedule a meeting, we'll schedule a new, a new hearing and a submission date. But how lo- how long do you need to respond to what the board's questions are on the fire department?
These I can respond in a, in this week, I can, a week, I can respond.
And what about the plan?
The plans I can update uh similarly in a week.
Okay, uh, and the statement of facts revisions as we.
Yes, everything can do that.
Okay. All right, so uh, Ms. Matias will get back to you as, as to, is, is it Ms., your case, Ms. Matias?
This one's mine. What about the fire department, though? Uh, John needs to set up an inspection.
Yeah, yeah, inspection, yeah, we need, we need the fire department sign off on this before even we can proceed to um, make an, take any decision, so.
And Madam Chair, we'd like to, to give the community board the opportunity.
Right, I will reach out to confirm the hearing date with the community board.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll be in touch with you, Mr. Patel.
Yeah.
With that, okay, uh, don't go anywhere. There was no call-ins. Okay, and so the next, um, one to the next case, please. Yeah, twenty twenty three fifteen A through twenty twenty three eighteen A, eight twenty, twenty-two, twenty-six, South Conduit Avenue, Queens.
Okay, Mr. Patel, um, so.
For the record.
You heard board's comments on it?
Yes, regarding uh uh parking was something that was discussed, but we are still in the process of going over this with the, you know, the plan examination process. So we, we stopped in the middle, you know, we just uh it, we didn't resolve it from the, with the plan examiner, from the F C A buildings, so.
So I think the way it would work, you first need to get a G C L approval for Buildings Department to approve uh the plan. Uh, because without it, you cannot start the review at D O B. That's my understanding.
Yes, so we are waiting for the B S A uh to give the.
Here is the catch, here is the catch. The, this action that is before us, it's only uh to allow a, a zoning lot that does not front on a map street uh to the waiver of the, of G C L thirty six. We can't waive any of the underlying regulations, so my.
Yeah, we now requested any waiver additional, it, it, only the, the, we get the approval from the B S A for the, you know, the unmap street, that's all we have.
I understand that, I understand that, we all do. But the problem is, the plan that you have submitted are not complying with the underlying regulations. You may be making requests for those uh waivers at the D O B. But when we approve a plan, we approve a plan that is complying. So at this point, what you have to submit is a revised zoning lot uh diagram that is complying with the underlying regulation. Um, and then you can go to D O B and get whatever waivers you want, and then come back to B S A for a substantial compliance or, or a letter of uh uh no objection or something like that.
Now, my understanding is that D O B will not look at, will not do any further uh plan examination or review until we get a clearance from the B S A.
Absolutely right, B S, uh, the, D O B will not review any plan until we grant the uh, the G C L thirty six waiver. But for us to grant a site plan, basically, uh, when we approve a G C L thirty six waiver, we approve a site plan. The site plan as represented is not something we can approve, because it, it has a lot of non-complying, as Commissioner Yun pointed out, and I pointed out, it has a lot of non-complying zoning elements that this board cannot grant under G C L thirty six.
Okay.
So, so in order for that, if you're seeking a particular uh, the waivers of these from Department of Buildings, you submit a separate plan showing this. I mean, you may submit this plan to D O B, but not, this is not the plan we are going to approve. We can only approve, and as of, uh, we can only approve a complying zoning lot. So if it results being two buildings that are complying with the underlying zoning, uh, whether that is your parking requirement, all the front yard, side yard, rear yard, and zoning density requirements, so be it. And you can go to D O B and say, listen, we got the approval for the G C L thirty six for this entire lot, and now we are proposing, instead of two homes, you are proposing three homes and uh allow us. We can, we, we may be able to grant it, uh, I mean, the D O B may consider uh granting it. But I think right now, what you have proposed, we cannot grant it, because it's not complying.
Non-compliant for parking.
And the rear yard, as, as I, I, I didn't.
It's a, it's a shallow lot, so ten foot is the rear yard requirement.
Hmm?
Is that, is it, this is a shallow lot, shallow. Which means the, you, you can have a ten-foot rear yard.
I believe the, the current full zoning lot, part of it is shallow, but part of it exceeds fifty feet in depth. The way you've divided the four tax lots, some of those resulting tax lots become, they fall under that definition, but the entire zoning lot does have one dimension of depth that it is in excess of fifty feet.
Well, is it the seventy-five feet is the, is the marker, like the, is that seven seventy-five feet?
Is it seventy-five?
It's shallow lot.
Well done.
So that's, that's all we're working with.
I have to pull up the zoning resolution.
Yeah, let me look at it. I may have misread, let's just look it up. Twenty-three fifty-two shallow lot definition.
But you have to maintain some minimum requirement.
Yeah, we are doing that, we are maintaining, uh, the minimum is fifty, I mean, ten. Then we progress, uh, uh, you know, we go with the uh, you know, keep that in line with the property line. So the minimum is ten feet.
An interior lot. Wait, what district are we in?
No, that's.
R four. So let me just pull up the zoning resolutions, we're all looking at the same thing. So twenty-three fifty-two special provisions for shallow interior lots in an R four.
It's A two, under A, the depth.
Is less than seventy feet deep.
So, so the question is, in that case, for that to be applicable, it says in a district, if it, if it is an interior lot that was owned separately and individually from all other journey tract of land, both on December fifteenth nineteen sixty-one, and on the date of the application of a, for a building permit, is less than seventy feet deep at any point, so that is something you have to establish uh, to qualify um as a shallow lot. Um.
It is a shallow lot.
No, you're, I was incorrect about fifty, uh, it is less than seventy feet deep at any point. I believe we, we agree with that, right?
Yeah.
But I believe the, the subsection two goes on to say that the required rear yard may be reduced by one foot for each foot by which the maximum depth of such zoning lot is less than seventy feet.
So we are, we are keeping that in line, we are using that ratio, we are keeping that uh reducing, you know, as you just mentioned. And uh, so far, the plan examiner didn't have any comments for that. Yeah, this uh, well, we had some plan examination done, and there was no comment for the year, year yard.
So here, I have a little bit of problem. Here you have one zoning lot, which is going to.
It is one zoning lot.
To pull uh in, divided into four tax lots.
Tax lot, yes.
Right, so the entire zoning lot has to, not only the zoning lot has to comply, but the buildings within it, when you average it out, or otherwise, they also have to comply.
Yes, they do, in terms of floor area, they comply. So we are looking at is one zoning lot and tax lots, four tax lots.
Okay.
So we do the calculations, we do uh for the, we add up all the floor areas, and they do comply.
Okay, so you're saying entire zoning lot, it complies, but.
Yes.
Do, don't you also, isn't there a provision um that says that even if you have a zoning lot, especially in lower density districts, if you subdivide the zoning lot into uh multiple tax lot, at the end, each tax lot should be able to uh be, should be complying?
Yeah, even if you do the uh separate tax lot, it should be complying. Because uh, you know, if we do it that way, it also complies. And if you do.
Tax lot area is complying, the tax lot, eh, the lot area is complying.
Yes, yes.
And the lot width is complying, but not necessarily the uh, the, in terms of the yard.
You know, the, initially, we had proposed eight parking spots, but then they came and they said uh, we need A D A parking, so that's why we had to add the five-foot uh aisle for the parking space, and that way, we had to reduce the parking number. So initially, the, our proposal was with eight parking spots, which are required for the.
So, so the parking waiver, I know you can, there is a, there is a mechanism in the zoning resolution. I remember seeing it, and I cannot find it.
Now that they have put in a, a, like a parking for handicap, then we have this uh, we can use this option, that there's no way to arrange the spaces. Uh, so we can request a waiver for that. If not, then we have another option, where we can put the parking inside the, you know, the, inside the building, which is a second option. But we are waiting for the plan examination, you know, the process.
Right, so, so for us to, if you want us to grant the G C L waivers for these four buildings that are being located, board has to approve a plan that is complying. So for now, your parking requirements are not complying. So you have to show your required number of parking spaces on E, uh, for the parking of.
So we can show the eight parking spots uh without the A D A, and uh, they'll, they'll comply with the parking.
Right, and the A D A, other requirements, all of those requirements need to be indicated. So I'm.
Yeah, because I don't know if this waiver that you've referenced is twenty-five twenty-seven, uh, which, which say, which states that um in all districts, the requirements set forth in twenty-five twenty-one shall not apply to any building or zoning lot where there is no way to arrange the required spaces with access to the street to conform to the provisions of twenty-five sixty-three. So I believe this is specific to what, whether or not access can be provided, not whether you can arrange the parking on your zoning lot.
Let me look at this section.
So, uh, there's no way to put these uh A D A requirements, and then at the same time, you want the, yeah, the number of required parking spaces, but we can do, option is the, inside the building, we can put three parking spots in three of the buildings.
Okay.
That, that would be.
Yeah, I believe there are many ways you could achieve the parking requirements on this, because we're looking at the zoning lot, right? We're looking at the full zoning lot, not the, not your proposal with eight homes. We're looking at the zoning lot compliance. So in your current proposal, perhaps that seems impossible, but what I think the chair is getting at is that we need something that conforms or complies as of right.
Okay.
You may have to rethink the proposal for your complying version that you would submit to us. Also want to go back to the rear yard and the shallow lots. It's pretty clear that the minimum that you stated, which is ten feet, that is for lots where the maximum depth is less than fifty. But your zoning lot is bigger than fifty. Your max, your rear yard would then be requi- would be reduced, your rear yard requirement would be reduced one foot for every foot that you are less than seventy.
We are doing that, we are, i- if you look at the tax slide number four and five, no, four and six, we are using the formula that you just mentioned.
I know, but for eight and ten.
Right.
Uh, you're creating a tax lot that is less than fifty feet deep, but we're talking about the one zoning lot. You are not creating four separate zoning lots.
You're creating tax lots within a zoning lot, so.
Within a zoning lot, right.
From the zoning lot point of view.
Even if you do from that point of view, you still have the ten-foot minimum, and then you're increasing uh where the, where is required.
So I, I, I think this is leading to uh something of a Z R D one. I really do not want us to be able to evaluate.
Yeah, but let's, let's, let's let D O B do this, you know, uh, we want to let the D O B uh, plan examination process go ahead, you know, but uh, you'll start from the middle.
The problem is, you need to give us a plan that is complying, and, and I, and I am uncomfortable so uh approving this as part of a G C L thirty-six, where, so it is not complying, because I have to tell you, when, when D, B S A does approve these G C Ls, sometimes, I'm not saying all plan examiners, some plan examiners may miss uh mistake, mistakenly take our approval of G C L thirty-six as an approval of the entire site plan, which is not what we are doing. So that's why I, I'm being very, I'm being careful about approving this, um, because we are not approving the plan.
Right.
But also, to me, the way that it's been presented, it looks like you would be actually seeking a variance for a number of waivers that I don't think are permitted as of right per the zoning resolution.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, let's, I, I would suggest you follow up with Ms. Matias and our uh executive director and figure out a way forward on this, because at this point, this is the bottleneck. And I'm not comfortable going ahead with a plan that is not complying.
We'll include Jaleen, who's the project manager.
Oh, she's the project manager on this?
Yeah, it's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Chief Daly, did you want to say something, or I don't know if you wanted to say something?
We have other comments. Oh, right, the hardship argument. Yeah, so also on this one, um, a hardship argument has not been provided, it's not very clear, so you need to provide that. Um, and, and also, you have stated that D O B, uh, you have an approved builder's payment plan.
Yes, I have ordered to the B S A uh approved plan, the B P P.
Yeah, that needs to be included.
Okay, I have sent it.
Your plan you submit needs to reflect all the, um, needs to be consistent with the approved B P P.
When did you send that, Mr. Patel?
In the initial submission, uh, I submitted the B P P uh that's approved.
Well, I, we don't have it on file.
You don't have it, okay.
So if you can, please resubmit it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Chief Daly, did you want to say something? No?
Okay.
No comment at this time.
Okay.
All right, um, I think you will need some time to have this uh revised, and we also don't have the community board vote on it. So this will take some time. Um, I would say, uh, please circle back with uh your project manager and uh our executive director and Ms. Matias.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we can go to the public.
The case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-three fifteen A through twenty twenty-three eighteen A, eighty-two twenty-six South Conduit Avenue, Queens.
Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six sorry, six four six five five eight eight six five six or eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, which is our toll-free number. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number eight one six five four zero one three two four eight and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Mr. Patel, while we're waiting, um, your statement of facts, I'm sorry if you already said this, um, says that the BPP and the SCARA application have both been approved by DOT, right?
Yes, uh, the BPP and yes.
And the SCARA application.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I don't see it in our files, so um if you could submit all of the supporting documents for that.
All right, okay.
Hmm, what's going on?
Time's up. No callers.
Time is up? Okay, all right, uh, okay. So, Mr. Patel, please follow up. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you, thank you.
And if you need any guidance, um, you know, do follow up with our project manager um for any clarification or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, if there are no further discussions, um, we still have received DOT letter um on Page Avenue, so I assume that will be a second call tomorrow.
Uh, I don't, I, I, I was looking through my emails, yes, we do not have anything from DOT, so it will be on for a second call.
And I personally reached out to DOT and I let them know, um, and I have not received anything back.
Yeah, I let them know we had a cut-off time, but, but, you know.
Oh, we have frozen.
So that said, this concludes the public hearing for, I'm sorry, anyone, some, somebody saying something?
Go ahead, please.
December, this concludes the public hearing for December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.